...and Justice Krah.
Well, Mr. Leach, thank you for joining us this evening. Appreciate it very much. Is there any public, anyone signed? No. Okay. Is there anyone that would like to address the housing authority? Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Second by Counselor Thomas. Could we have a moment on the information items? Andy, you want?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to mention really quickly about two items that have been important to the Commission, both sale of property, the 10 units scattered site, sale of property are, we're 30 days into the posting for those property sales. A meeting with a group of commercial realtors tomorrow morning. We haven't had any substantial offers yet. We've had a lot of conversations. We're optimistic. Finally, we're working on the 47 units public housing application for HUD. We're currently working on our appraisals, expect to have those by the end of August with an application going in in the month of September. I did want to mention something else if I could. There's a new program that we have come across called Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. It's a HUD housing program. This program is specifically structured to allow flexibility for public housing authorities to refinance and recapitalize their public housing properties, specifically HUD's allowing housing authorities to use different types of financing, public and private, that HUD has never allowed housing authorities to use before. So it's something we're looking into. There is a fairly narrow application period in September. That's something that we would be coming back to the Commission this next month with a recommendation on an action.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Okay. You all know the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. There's no special orders of business. There's no unfinished business, no new business. Without objection, the housing authority is adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate your patience while we have our transition here. Are you ready? Give just a second and we'll be live again. Are we set? All right. Our call to order, this evening's meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency for the City of Salem, August 13, 2012. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett.
Here.
Board Member Tesler is absent and sitting in for her tonight is Guest Board Member Jeff Leach. Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Claussen.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Here.
Board Member Thomas.
Here.
Board Member Blazy.
Here.
Board Member Clem.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here. All right. We have public comment, or excuse me, we have reports of boards, commissions, and committees. I don't believe we have any of those scheduled this evening.
No.
Okay. Then our next item is public comment. And let's see. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Did anyone want to speak under the public comment section for the Urban Renewal Agency?
I talked about it.
All right. Seeing none. Member Bennett, would you please have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett, seconded by Member Nanki, to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. You have two information reports in your packet. And beyond that, we have no special orders of business and no unfinished business and no public hearings and no new business. So I will adjourn this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Okay. Then I will open the meeting for the City of Salem City Council for August 13, 2011. We'll call to order and have the roll call, please.
Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler is absent and sitting in for her tonight is Guest Counselor Jeff Leach. Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Claussen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Blazy.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. And we'll, Counselor Bennett, please address the additions and deletions to the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda.
Who seconded that? Did anyone second that? Oh, thank you very much. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now have time for public comment. And I see we have a couple of people who've signed up this evening for public comment. And this is for items that are on the agenda other than the public hearings. And we have Suzanne Luley and then Lorraine Ingles?
Mick.
I'm sorry.
Suzanne, and my comments are on a public hearing, and that's the sheet I was supposed to sign up on.
Oh, okay. Well, we can switch you over to the public hearing sheet. Okay. All right. And then we have Lorraine, is it Kimble?
Kimlinger.
Kimlinger. Thank you. And is your Lorraine? Okay. All right. We'll just get this sorted out. Yes. They do. Oh, all right. Oh, all right. Here we are, back to the agenda. And we will have two speakers, Suzanne Luley and Lorraine Kimlinger. Yes.
My name was supposed to be scratched.
Oh, oh, oh. All right. I can do that. Well. It's all right. We're only live on television. Okay, we have one person. We'll give her a moment. Yeah, because it's not, we'll help you hear something else. So, what? Sure. Sure. Okay. Okay. Excuse me, are you ready for testimony?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Luley. I'm at 2325 Rural Avenue Southeast here in Salem, 97302. And yes, I'm here about the replating of the 23rd Street property. But I don't know what to ask until after they have made their presentation. And I don't know if there's anything of any concern that I need to ask. So I was hoping it would follow that kind of a pattern, that they would make their report first, and then I would have a chance to take some notes and ask some questions and make a statement. But at this time, I have nothing to say.
All right.
Because I don't know what they're going to say.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, this is an information report. So unless a counselor wants to ask questions, there is no staff presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
See, and I had no idea what was going to be presented tonight. That's the reason I'm here, is I wanted to gather information. And if it was in the format to where we could ask questions afterwards or make comments, that's what I was here for.
I see. Okay.
So I'll be hanging around for that anyway.
Excuse me. Fine. Thank you. I think our city manager would like to say something.
The Community Development Director had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vicki Hardin Woods, Community Development Director. I believe the case that Ms. Luley is speaking about is the replat, which is an information report, which is on your agenda tonight for some property on 23rd Street. There's another land use matter related to that, which is scheduled for a public hearing next week. And so, or two weeks at the next meeting. And I believe that's the issue that is of concern. So if Ms. Luley did want to speak on the replat tonight, this would be the only opportunity to do that.
Okay. And I don't know what to ask, so I'm not going to speak on that tonight. And I was very well aware that two weeks from now, that there's a public hearing on it. And you'll see me again.
All right. Fine.
Thank you.
Very much. And you know staff would be available. Are staff available to answer any questions she might have in the meantime?
Yes.
Yes.
But until I hear what they're going to say, I don't know what I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as staff reiterated, they're not going to do anything. The only, if counselors had questions, we would ask them. Other than that, it will just disappear from the agenda tonight. So if you're going to wait here for several hours, no one will...
I still need to hear what's going to be said.
There won't be anything. We moved the consent calendar, and then it's voted in with this giant list of other things.
Okay. There won't be any presentation whatsoever?
No.
No comments?
No. Unless a counselor has a specific question in regards to that issue, I know I do not, that would just be answering a counselor's question from staff. That would be the only information transfer that would take place.
So the information that you received as counselors, I need to go back to staff and have them send me a copy of what you received so that I know what it was? And I can address it two weeks from now at the next public hearing about this property?
No. Because that public hearing has nothing to do with this informational item.
Hmm, okay.
And Mr. Fernandez is here, and he can talk to you offline if you'd like and give you some more information.
Okay.
Copy the staff report if you'd like that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We'll carry on. We then have no one else signed up for public comment this evening. Counselor Bennett, would you please make a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Nanki, to accept the consent calendar, to move the consent calendar for adoption. Counselor Bennett, were there no polls for...
There were no polls.
Oh, all right.
The only thing I would call to counselor's attention was that there was an addition under action items, just so you could notice.
Okay. All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Nanki to adopt the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to public hearings. We have several public hearings this evening, I believe four. So you would like a recess, Counselor Nanki?
Just a couple of minute recess. I'd like to talk to the Community Development Director.
All right. We'll take a two-minute recess. Two minutes, three minutes? Okay. All right. Thank you. Has a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just for the record, I had an expedite contact on the public hearing regarding, it's the first public hearing. I can't see very well, but it's the Fairview property. It was an email exchange, which I've included. I sent to the recorder and has been included in the public record.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll now have the first public hearing, item 4A, introduced by the city recorder.
There's a continued hearing.
Is that right?
It's a continued hearing. We can just pick up.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is a continuation, so we'll just pick up with where we left off last time. And I believe we have a staff presentation.
A few comments, Mayor, if I may.
Uh huh.
Vicki Hardin Woods, Community Development Director. I just wanted to set the stage for the hearing tonight and talk a little bit about the process that it's taken to get to this point and how this has worked. What you have tonight is a new proposal, a redesigned proposal from the applicants regarding this application. That proposal, you have a staff report that fully analyzes that and gives you some recommendations in regard to whether it meets the intent, whether it is consistent with the Fairview Master Plan. Our recommendation is that it is. What I wanted to really talk about tonight is that there's been quite a process associated with this. And I wanted to talk about how that works and how it's working in this case. So typically, what happens when you have a land use application like this, you receive an, we receive an application. It comes to the staff. The staff takes a look at it, analyzes it to the best of our ability, related to the criteria that are described by law, which we have to use. And then a public hearing is held, comments are received. And in this case, some changes have been made. And now it's the council's decision. And I think in this case, it's a little bit unusual for a land use case, because we're talking about consistency with the Fairview Master Plan. This is the Fairview Master Plan. You've received a copy of it in our last round on this. It's full of words and full of directions, probably impossible to meet every aspect of this plan. And so it's up to you to determine whether the proposal has met the plan to the degree that you could determine that it's consistent. You certainly have had lots of testimony, and you'll have more tonight, about what constitutes consistent. I think from the staff perspective, we looked at the 12 principles and used that. Other people have picked other portions of it. What you have to do is to listen to all that way and decide. And what I wanted you to know, since the last time that we met, we, the staff met immediately after that last hearing with the applicants, talked about where can they go from here? What else could they do? We suggested to them that they do some redesigning at that point in time. They came back, said, yes, we're willing to do that. We sat down and talked to them about what we thought, from a staff perspective, might be the kinds of things that need to be addressed. We asked them to look at connecting more streets, making the streets more connected one to another, orienting the buildings toward the street so that you create that public space in front of the street. We talked about improving Reed Road. We talked about pervious surface, addressing those items more fully in a proposal. We also met then with the Morningside Neighborhood, with representatives of Sustainable Fairview and representative of Fringle Creek Community to make sure we understood what their concerns were. The applicants went away. They did some redesigning. They came back and talked to us. We went over the concerns that we had heard from those groups who had testified earlier. I believe the applicant also has been meeting with them. And we are then here tonight for you to hear the outcome of all of that and make your choice about how you think this works. I know there's been some criticism of this process, but what I'd like to tell you is that this process has worked just the way that it's supposed to. Somebody comes in, they come in with a proposal, it gets analyzed, there's lots of public input, discussion, lots of things are aired, and then a final decision is made. And that's where we are tonight, or in the very near future. And I would expect that the applicants will present to you tonight what those changes are, and then that you'll take testimony. And as staff, we're here to answer questions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that explanation and overview. All right. We have several people signed up. And first of all, I assume that the applicant is here. Is that Alan Meyer? Do you know? Oh, all right. Is the applicant here to make a presentation this evening?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And please introduce yourself. And you have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Okay.
And you've got it right there, don't you? Okay.
Sorry about that, and thank you.
All right. That's fine. Welcome.
Mayor Peterson, city councilors, my name is Chris Goodell. I'm with AKS Engineering. My address is 528 Cottage Street Northeast, Salem, Oregon 97301. I'm representing the property owner applicant, Simpson Hills LLC. Wanted to... This project represents a new beginning for the City of Salem. The refinement plan process has never been taken to the level of detail that's been involved in this project. With an intense series of meetings with staff, neighbors, and other community members, a new community plan is emerging that's different from all others. The refinement plan process will never be the same. The process for the Fairview Hills refinement plan has had significantly more public input than any refinement plan that has been processed by the city to date. The refinement plan is the culmination of many months of hard work by a lot of people. The result is a plan that's respectful of the history of the site, responds to the desires and needs of the neighbors, and establishes a new kind of community. It's resulted in a plan that we should all be proud of. It will look and feel different from other City of Salem neighborhoods. Streets will be narrow, oriented towards the pedestrian, and feature short walkable blocks. We're introducing new innovative building types like carriage houses, mixed with town homes, apartments, and duplexes. Large expanses of open spaces wait for children and other people to run and for residents to gather. An extensive trail system will draw people from the neighboring communities to enjoy a walk through this vibrant community. We're not just building a new neighborhood, we're building a new type of community here. I want to take just a few minutes, as Vicki had mentioned, to talk about the elements of this plan that are distinctive and separate it from other projects, especially as the comments that were heard at the last hearing. These changes were made to the project in response to those. Earth Advantage certification is proposed in this application. This represents a strong commitment to sustainable buildings and sustainable development. An interconnected street system is proposed. It's consistent with the Fairview Master Plan. It emphasizes multimodal connectivity throughout the site. This includes multi-use pathway connections to the existing bus service on Battle Creek Road, thereby assuring that transit is close at hand, as called for in the Fairview Plan. This project features short walkable blocks, which includes sidewalks on both sides of public and private streets. It's accessible to all. They're interwoven throughout the community, and anybody can go anywhere through the project that they would like to go. This encourages future residents to walk every day, as called for in the Fairview Plan. Consistent with the Fairview Master Plan, the project includes complex layering of walking and bike trails, within drainage ways and wide green corridors, preserved open spaces. The revised refinement plan includes engaging streetscapes with narrow pedestrian-friendly streets, inviting front porches and entryways on the street. This is multifamily density at a human scale. The streets here will be narrow, pedestrian-friendly, lined with street trees and vegetated bioswales. On-street parking is encouraged. We included a variety of broken-up, smaller parking areas rather than large expansive parking lots. Another change that's included is a multiple, different types of housing types. We have carriage-over-garage units, town homes, duplexes, and all these are oriented towards the streets and green corridors. You can see here, these are the, the carriage houses are shown in blue. They're basically units above three parking spaces, so areas that would just be parking are now included to have a home on top of it, a studio-type apartment. These are the town home units. They're dispersed throughout the project. They're basically like a rowhouse-type project. Duplexes are stacked units with one unit on top of another, so it's two dwelling units per building, two stories. And then there's a variety of apartment homes. There's, it goes from four-unit apartment homes to six-unit to eight units, so between two and three stories. And then, because this is a mixed-use district, we have... And then, because this is a mixed-use district, we have provided neighborhood commercial, neighborhood commercial component on the, at the intersection of Reed and, and Second Street. This component is called for in the city code, and it's not intended in any way to compete with the Village Center that's off this property. It's required, we met with city staff early on, and this was an important component to them, so that's why it's included. There's a, a lot been said about stormwater on this project, and this project includes a wide variety of stormwater techniques, low-impact development. So, included in that is we drain into natural drainage corridors, promoting infiltration and percolation. We have landscape bioswales that line the streets, so all the private streets will have bioswales that the roads will drain into. We have vegetated filter strips in the green corridors, so runoff will go from the pervious areas of the project and be filtered by a filter strip, planted native vegetation, and then, and then will drain into the drainage ways. We also have infiltration planters located in low points on the site where infiltration can be achieved safely. In addition, something that we worked really hard on to provide is, we have areas that are included to be permeable pavement, so this will include areas of the entire commercial parking lot, and then certain areas in the multifamily component will have permeable Another component of the project that a lot was set out before is, is the condition of Reed Road. Our project involves repaving, reconstructing Reed Road to 34 feet wide with the first phase of the project. So, this is going to provide a safe means of access to the, to the community and those I wanted to add that, as part of the Earth Advantage component of the project, we're here tonight with a member of the Earth Advantage team that's here to answer any questions that you would have on Earth Advantage. At our latest Neighborhood Association meeting, there's quite a bit of questions about Earth Advantage and how it worked, and so, we thought that it'd be a good idea to include somebody that has, that had expertise in Earth Advantage, so we're here tonight with him. And addition to that, if there's questions on the stormwater drainage, if there's questions on the phasing plan for the streets, which is a fairly complex portion of the document, the project engineer is here to answer questions that deal with the phasing, stormwater, and So, I guess, with that, I just wanted to add that, we know it's taken a long time to get to this, this point. We've continued a couple of hearings, we've met with the neighbors a whole bunch, we've met with city staff a whole bunch. We believe all that hard work's paid off. We met with Morningside Neighborhood Association last Wednesday, and where they voted to recommend approval of our project to you here tonight. We consider that a, a big deal. We, we're really proud of that. So, like the Morningside Neighborhood Association, we're, we're asking for your approval here tonight, city councils. And just I want to reiterate that if there's questions on the project, we have a number of different experts here tonight, and we'd like to answer all those questions. We want to talk about those things. We'd like to do it before you close the record for testimony so that we're available to do that. With that, if you've got any questions, we can answer them now, or if you want to take other testimony, however you want to work it is.
Thank you very much. We will have time now for questions from councilors. Councilors, Councilor Nanke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and thank you for some wonderful changes to the refinement plan presentation. Couple of questions. You'd spoken of meeting with the city and the Neighborhood Association. Did you actually get to meet with Sustainable Fairview Associates?
I didn't personally, but the property owners did, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the, the project team, the Simpson Hills LLC did meet with them.
Because I've been waiting to see what their response was, and we have it in additions, and it's like, who wouldn't I listen to you to read what they have here? So, I'm kind of in flux on a couple of items they had in here. You said you had someone to discuss the Earth Advantage program.
Correct.
Before that happens, I'm assuming gold is the highest ranking inside of that system as well, and?
I think they have a platinum, I'm not quite sure.
Should I approach? Yes, platinum is our highest certification level. There's silver, gold, and platinum.
Yeah. Excuse me, if you'd like to address the answer at the microphone, right there.
Hi, I'm Peter Brown from 2121 Southeast Belmont, Portland, Oregon. Our certifications go silver, gold, and platinum, with platinum being the highest.
Significant difference in between gold and platinum?
It, it's hard to say significant, but there are documented differences, yes. It's, you know, it's a better building, it's a more sustainable community when it's platinum than gold, and same with, if it's gold, it's more sustainable than silver.
How would, is there cross-comparison between the Earth Advantage then and Leeds? Would like Leeds silver or be the equivalent of, of Earth Advantage platinum?
Well, it's, it's hard to say that they're comparable, but the one thing I'll say about green certification programs across the whole nation is they basically all incent or address the same measures. You know, the green certification programs, for instance, ours has five pillars: energy, land, water, materials, and health. And although Lead for Homes breaks that out into seven, one of their pillars is innovative credits, these are all the same elements, and pretty much very, very similar measures.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there a level of Earth Advantage that you were actually looking at?
It's certification, which is silver, is that, is the same?
That's, that's the base that has to be achieved.
And you would, that's what you would be looking for?
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions of councilors? All right. Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with the Neighborhood Association. If there is a person from the Neighborhood Association designated to speak, that person will have five minutes, and then everyone else on the list will have three minutes each. So, I can't tell by looking at this list, Alan Meyer, Mike Mitchell, Jeff James, Larry George, Sam Hall, Pam Schmidling. Are any of those people here to speak as a representative of the Neighborhood Association?
Good evening. I'm Pamela Schmidling. I'm currently Chair of Morningside Neighborhood Association. I live at 735 Ratcliffe Drive, southeast Salem, Oregon. We have had numerous discussions on this with AKS and with our team as a whole group, as a board, and there's been also some meetings held separately. So, it has been an immense project for us, and we have tried very hard to work out issues and try to get to the most dreamiest place we could get. I don't know that we succeeded, but this is where we're at. Otherwise, I'm open to questions. There's been some, some emails that have happened that have not been, one transpired before we met as a board and voted on it. I sent you a note to that extent. And then, again, this morning, there was another letter sent, and again, I, I sent in a note saying that I would respond to everything tonight. We have currently 14 members on our board. As was stated in your, in the letter that you received, it said 15. We had a member that was very important to this whole function resign as of the 6th of August. He got accepted to Yale for a master's program and decided to jump on it, which can't blame him, and we wish him the best, but he was a kind of vital to our issues and had information that we, as common people, don't really know because it was his specialty. So, with that, we continued on, and we voted that night. There were nine board members present, and five of those board members chose to vote in favor of supporting this, this project. So, we are, where we're at within the whole thing, there's lots of other board members that wish to speak on little pieces of it. So, if you have any questions for me?
Yes, Councilor Nanke, excuse me, Councilor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pamela, thanks for coming down and all the hard work you've done. I, the implication is with five, four, and one against that the Neighborhood Association is in favor of the last version of this refinement plan, is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Councilor Nanke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Pam. Thanks for allowing me to stand in the parking lot for several occasions for extended periods of time. While you guys discuss that with me.
You're welcome.
Do we have a good representation, majority-minority opinion, that will then come out from other board members tonight, or they?
I think so.
Okay.
I, I truly hope so. There are some members here that are in favor and some members who hopefully are not, so...
Excellent.
I'm hoping that will happen for you.
I just wanted to make sure we, we would get that.
You're getting it.
Knowing our history as a Neighborhood Association-
Yes!
And having both viewpoints expressed to their fullest.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thanks.
All right. No other questions for Ms. Schmidling? All right. Thank you very much. All right, then, we'll go to back up to the top of the list, Alan Meyer, and then Mike
Good evening, Mayor, city councilors. I'm Alan Meyer. I live at 4545 Sunland Street, southeast, 97302, and I'm currently the Transportation Chair of the Morningside Neighborhood Association. My comments tonight will be brief. I won't show videos of cars passing on Reed Road. But I thought it was important that I appear to express my appreciation to the applicants for their agreement to improve Reed Road from Battle Creek to Second Street in addition to any other required improvements. We raised concerns about the safety of Reed Road with the additional traffic that would result from the new development, and with the commitment from the applicants to widen that section of Reed Road from the current 20 feet to 34 feet, that concern is alleviated. Our understanding is that 24 feet will be striped for auto traffic, and the remaining 10 feet will be for bicycles and pedestrians. So, as this street improvement is not required at this time under city code, we really appreciate the applicant agreeing to widen Reed Road as part of their first phase of development.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate you coming down tonight. Mike Mitchell? Welcome, and you have three minutes. I should tell people the amber light comes on at the end of two, the red light comes on when your three minutes is up.
Sounds good. Good evening, Mayor Peterson and council members. I am Mike Mitchell. I live at 3238 Lorian Lane, southeast, here in Salem, and I'm here tonight to explain a little bit of our board meeting, where we changed from opposing this plan to going along with it. We do recognize we had some members who weren't present that still feel opposed to the plan, and I do believe they will be addressing you tonight, too, and we're totally fine with that. It's not often that our board does not make a unanimous decision. We're usually pretty much in groove with each other, but this one was different. Some members have been involved since the development of the Fairview Master Plan, and it was a very tough, emotional decision for them. They recognize the improvements made since the last council meeting, but they still believe that more could be done. Ultimately, we had nine voting members present. We voted five in favor, one opposed, and three abstained. And like I say, we do recognize that some who were not present would have voted no, and we're welcome to hearing their opposing views tonight. The five in favor have also been moved by the testimony still in opposition to the plan, but feel that under today's economic conditions, maybe trying to be perfect is not feasible. Jerry Jones built a $1.1 billion football stadium in Dallas, Texas for the Dallas Cowboys, and that might be the beautiful goal to strive for, but I believe the Olympic Stadium was built for 700 million, and there's other stadiums being built these days. My favorite, the Minnesota Vikings, are going to get a new stadium. I think it's around 700 million, and we feel that even though they're not perfect, that they're beautiful and feasible, and we kind of relate that back to where this project has come so far. We know that some of the issues that were brought up had to do with part of the land being cleared and leveled and things like that. It's our understanding from the current owners of the land that a lot of that work was done prior to their acquiring it, so we kind of overlooked some of that, the five of us who voted in favor. Even though the builder has opted for a less expensive certification with Earth Advantage opposed to Lead, we still encourage and ask the builder to please build everything possible to make the property eco-friendly and self-sustaining. Maybe if you have a chance to get to gold instead of silver, that would be awesome. We're glad and honored to have been able to play our part, but are relieved that we have a committed city council who must ultimately make this hard decision. We wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Mitchell? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony, your coming down this evening, and all the work you've been doing. Jeffrey James, and then Larry George.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening. Welcome.
Jeff James, Ward Three, the biggest, the widest ward. Right, Brad? I was going to be speaking for three people, but I, I see one of my fellow board members, Keith, has shown up, so I'm, but you've seen a lot of James Santana. He's in Connecticut, as Pamela mentioned, and he sent you at 3:30 this afternoon a detailed letter, which should be on your desk, and he, he's, he's emphasizing the need to adhere to Goal Five, build innovative green buildings. He doesn't think that what's being proposed meets that standard that's described in the plan. He also emphasizes Goal Seven, zero impact on the regional watershed, and we certainly don't see that. And then, I'm one of the, one of the board members and one of the people still concerned. In your, on your desk, third page, I think most of you have it, is a list of some 19 policies that are not being conformed to yet, so I'm not going to go into those 19 unless you want me to ask, ask questions, but I'll leave you with those not satisfied. There's, so, I have a recommendation. I think you have three choices as a council. You could ask the applicant to go back and, again, and make their plan in conformance with the 19 policies that are listed in the attachment, plus the ones that James Santana has highlighted, Policies Five and Seven. Or your second option might be to deny the application due to its non-conformance with the Fairview Master Plan, and a lot of us have been working on this for 14 years, and we spent hundreds of hours in the last few months, nine months, on this. Third option you might consider would be to require that the 19 policies or the 21 policies be addressed and complied with as conditions of approval, and handle it that way. So, I prefer Option One, which was to, we've, we've achieved some success with our persistence here in getting a, a better proposal than just a conventional apartment building, which is what we started with, a series of big apartment buildings, and so, I think there've been a lot of improvements, but we're not there yet, and so, with respect, I would suggest that we ask them to try a little, a little harder. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. James? All right. Thanks again for coming down this evening. And Larry George, and then Sam Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council. I'm Larry George. I live at 1285 Centennial Court, southeast, Salem, Oregon 97302. And I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. There's something I've been involved with for a long, long time. I was Chair of the Association back when the, this development first, they came forward and showed us kind of what they were going to do, kind of in a three-phase project of doing the apartments first, and then maybe some condos, and then single-family homes later on, and so, there's been a, but there's been an awful lot of water under the bridge, and there's been some, kind of, I think some kind of heated discussions, too, about how some of these things go, because people feel passionately, one way or the other, maybe, about things. But at the time, I did, I attended in the time that I, I came and gave testimony at the Planning Commission meeting, and I testified in favor of it at that time, and the reason was, in reading the Fairview Master Plan, the Fairview Master Plan is not as finite as some people might think it is. It's, it's, I think that's why the Salem, the planning department saw that. It's, I think that's why the Salem, the Planning Department saw that, and that's what the, I think that's what the Planning Commission saw, that you can have minimum and maximum within it, you know, because at one, when they developed this thing to begin with, one owner, the San Pablo Fairview, had the whole 275 acres, and so I don't think they ever envisioned it being split like it's been split into three different groups. And I guess the way I feel about it, as some of the others that are opposed to what AKS is doing, is that they, because they say it doesn't meet these standards, well, my feeling is, is that they're perfectly free to, if they feel like there's the best, then they should tout that when they're selling their property, when they're selling it, you know, but then why impede and stop the others from doing something, and they have done a tremendous amount of work. And I go along with Alan Meyer. The big game changer for me was when they went over and above and beyond by saying they would complete this, do this Reed Road half-street improvement at great expense to them when they didn't have to according to the development plan, not until they developed on that, on Reed Road with one of those lots, but they did it. And then they've done a lot of other changes, the way the housing is facing, all of that. They've done a tremendous amount of work that I think that maybe, you know, people need to be aware of, and so for all these reasons, I vote in favor of, I'm supporting it. I was gone out of town last week on vacation, and so if I'd have been there, I would have voted in favor of it, so I guess if James Santana had been there, he would have voted against it, so it would have still been the same vote. So I think it was significant, like was said earlier, that we were, like, the Neighborhood Association was against it and then came that minute far around. I think that's to be a credit to the work that AKS has put in, and also the work the Neighborhood Association, the people that voted on it, has put in. So thank you very much for listening to me this evening.
Well, thank you very much for coming down to testify. Do councilors have any questions for Mr. George?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And Sam Hall, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Sam Hall, 1795 Cottage Street Northeast, and I'm here in my role as the Managing Member of Sustainable Fairview Associates, and I've been here before. I hope you have in front of you the email that I sent through, Jason, over the weekend, and it basically, I think, says everything I want to say, and so I will be very brief beyond that. I'm glad to see somebody from Earth Advantage here. I hope you ask him a lot of questions. One of the points that I made in my letter is that I believe in Earth Advantage. I think it's a very good program. It's not the same as LEEDs, but it's a very good program, and it's the level that you achieve within the program that is crucial. And my understanding is that with Earth Advantage, and they're commercial and multifamily and a bunch of them, but roughly speaking, perfect is 150. Platinum is 80%. It's 120. Gold is 80, so a little less than 2/3. It's 60-some percent to be gold, and silver is 60. That's 40%. So that's sort of the gauging, 60, 80, 120. My personal view is platinum is hard. Platinum is such that you may not make any money. Gold is not that hard. Silver is routine these days. Gold shows you're seriously interested in being sustainable, and I really believe that the vision of Fairview calls for at least gold, and SFA cannot support this unless they will go for the gold. That's a key point for us. There are some others, but I won't address them. The only other comment I would make is, we're a little pressed for time here. They got this report in, it says July 31. We saw it on the first and the second. We didn't see the staff report at all, over the weekend even. Haven't seen the comments yet. Have a number of questions, most of which we're not seriously concerned about, but I'm interested to hear that the 34 feet of Reed Road that they're going to do is for cars? I'm not sure what it's for. That we, the developers, are required to do a half-street improvement, which is, I understand it's to improve 40 feet at some time. Anyway, it's been, we've been pressed a little for time. A few more weeks would be a good thing, but the light's flashing, and I'm here as much as anything to answer questions.
You actually have until the red light comes on, Mr. Hall, but I think we have some questions of, by councilors. Shall I proceed to that? All right, I think Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thanks for your good thoughts there, Mr. Hall. In comparison, does your development achieve the gold standard in Earth Advantage or some equivalent?
We certainly hope it will. We have the disadvantage of not knowing exactly how it's going to build out. Simpson Hills has the advantage of knowing exactly what they're going, well, exactly. They don't know exactly, and that's part of the point. They've still got some design decisions to make, but they know they're going to build basically 400 and some multifamily or houses. They can decide what to go for.
Okay, and you're not, you don't have the ability to predict your development?
No, that's correct, and...
I mean, they're right next to each other, so I'm trying to get an idea of whether the neighbors are imposing a higher standard-
We will do as well as they do or better, I assure you.
Than what the, than you can meet, so...
Yeah.
And to the point about the commercial area of Lot 3, is you're advocating that that be developed?
Some of their original plans showed housing there, and we thought, that's terrific, and having some non-housing there is good, but we don't want the Village Bakery there. We, you know, there are certain uses that need to be in the Village Center. There are certain uses that could well be there. I don't believe that they know, at this point, what is going to be there, but the way it is designed makes us worry that it will, in fact, work against the viability of having a Village Center.
And with regard to your development, do you know where your, how yours will be phased and built out?
We know where it is exactly, yes.
But you don't, there's still quite a bit of property on yours that hasn't been developed, so-
That's correct.
You can't speak to how every part of it's going to be developed?
Nope.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
All right, Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hall, what, on the letter, I'm just seeing it for the first time tonight, so I did a quick glance through it. On the other bottom of the first page, he has said, eliminate any downward variances requested as regards to frontage setback and entrance features of the development. What are you referring to on that, if you don't mind?
Well, it's Page 30 or something, but it has to do with the entryways as well as the orientation of the buildings, and code calls for every four units, you do this, and it has to be such inside wide, and I think they are asking for what I call a downward variance, as well, not four units, but six units, and a little bit narrower. I have not had any chance at all to analyze the conditions that the staff has just put on this. I don't know what is there. I don't know how much downward variance, as I call it, exists. Thank you.
All right, was that you? All right, thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks, Sam. I've been waiting for something from you guys, because I know that between yourself and your organization, as well as the Pringle Creek community, you have lots of money into this development, and hence whatever happens adjacent to it can affect your investment as well, so I was, and I still haven't been able to read through this to its entirety. My question is, is have you actually talked to the property owner and discussed the issues?
We've talked to, well, I have talked to their representatives because of schedules and the timing of this. It didn't happen until Friday, and I was hoping to have a chance to talk to them before I wrote anything, and I did, in fact, get that, alert them to what my letter was going to say. I pressed them hard on the main two issues, and they listened respectfully. They didn't say they would change anything, but because, well, because, and do let, let me say, if it's not clear, I really appreciate the changes they have made. They moved from sort of nothing, as far as I was concerned, to, hey, this has the promise, it can be done. They need to make some policy decisions. They need to go for gold rather than settle for silver. They need to do some things like that. Earlier plan had no hope. They did some very fine work.
Yeah, and I got that from your communication, so hopefully that transferred across as well. In regards to the Lot 3 issue, then, did you get a chance to discuss that with them?
I did, I did not really.
Okay.
I told them there were some others, but I did not address them specifically, I don't think.
All right, yeah, because it's hard to tell, media seeing it, to see, and if you haven't gotten to speak with them about it, how that kind of balances with their development plans as well.
And as I say, I have not had a chance really to read the conditions that staff has put on, and to see which, if any, of those might be addressed there.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sam, in reading your letter, and I'm just getting a quick run through it now, too, and then listening to what you said, it sounds like the bottom line is gold certification. When I read this, I only see two items that, I want to kind of understand that, what...
I could have made a list of eight items, or something like that. For me, two stand out.
Okay.
The others, we will have perhaps another day to address them, to work on changing their minds, or talking about it, or things like that. The gold certification, I think, is not only important really, because it changes their design, but it's also important symbolically.
Right. So the problem I've got is what I have is my, the testimony in front of me, and if we were to move this tonight, it sounds like one of the major issue to you is that it achieved the gold certification.
Indeed.
The second one, the Lot 3 question, I was listening carefully to how the engineer from AKS described that. It sounded like something that was sort of voiced, if I understood correctly, it was sort of, yeah, we did this commercial thing because that's what we were told to do, and I wasn't real clear, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought it was sort of sounded like, not something that was a bottom-line issue.
As far as I know, it's 100% their choice, and as I said earlier, of their plans showed it with housing.
Okay, that's the commercial. Am I reading this wrong?
Lot 3. There is, there is no requirement for anything commercial in the property they own.
Okay, well, I'll ask them that then, that question. Thank you.
All right. Are there further questions for Mr. Hall? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now have questions from staff, or I don't mean questions from staff, questions from council to staff. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Ms. Woods, could you clarify this commercial strip, and is this, is this the staff's idea? Is it part of the requirement? How did this come to pass?
It's not part of the requirement, but it is permitted within that area, so the Fairview plan calls for a range of different uses around the property, and on this area, it's a mixed-use area. I don't think we instructed them to do it, at least not to my knowledge, we did not, but I don't think we were in opposition to it, and in fact, in some ways, it enhances that mixture of uses and the walkability and having services close to where people live. We didn't discourage it, certainly.
Okay.
And if I may, I'd like to address one other thing that came up. I want to talk a little bit about this refinement plan. This is the third refinement plan in the Fairview area. We have conditioned it much more specifically than any of the other refinement plans, so the other refinement plans don't speak to whether there has to be LEED certification or Earth Advantage certification. That's kind of open to the developer. In this case, because of some of the discussions we had, we have suggested a condition that they would have to build to the Earth Advantage level, not the gold, however. And so we, the other big condition that's on this that are not on the other ones is they have to be in substantial conformance to what you see, and the other ones are much less specific plans and would not be required to meet that kind of high standard of being as close to what you see. You know, here, they've provided elevations and building materials and much more than what we see from the other plans.
Are there questions? Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is in regards to the Earth Advantage requirement. The applicant had stated that they were going to do Earth Advantage on the residential, but it looks like the only condition that's in the staff report is only for commercial structures. Is that right?
What we did is, we looked through their refinement plan very closely, and where they made an affirmative statement that this is going to happen, we, by calling, saying they have to be in substantial conformance, and then it has to happen, there was no reference to being Earth Advantage for the commercial, that's why we applied it.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Blasey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question I have is with regards to condition number three, a minimum of 20% of driveway, parking, private streets located shall be constructed of pervious-type pavement. Is your understanding that that'll be more than 20%, or that's just the minimum requirement?
Well, what we did is, they showed on their plan, that they submitted this plan, that there would be a range, and in the statement, a statement in the refinement plan, a range between...
Plus or minus 25% is what they had indicated on that attachment.
So we wanted to make sure that plus or minus was sure, and that's why we conditioned it on having a minimum of 20%. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Woods, in terms of Earth Advantage requirement and/or LEEDs requirements, have we ever required that in any developments or refinement plans, master plans, in the city of Salem today?
No.
Okay, and they've stepped forward and said, is staff aware of the quantifiable difference between the two, Earth Advantage and LEEDs?
I could not speak to it, and I don't know that we can quantify that. I think you'd probably need that testimony from the Earth Advantage.
Yeah, okay, all righty. Thank you.
Further questions of staff? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And what kind of troubles me most is the communication back and forth from Sustainable Fairview. How is it that they would not have seen the restrictions or the conditions that we placed on that?
Well, the, those, that staff report was posted on Friday, so it was available, I believe, over the weekend on the website. It was, we were late getting that staff report out. It was a big plan. We scrutinized it very closely with the final version. We went back and forth and asked them to make further changes, to modify it, to make it better, and by the time we got that plan in, you know, we turned it around as quickly as we could, but that report was out on Friday, not on Wednesday, as would normally be true. The proposal from the applicants was out, though, by August the 1st, and that was available for people, but it's true, the conditions that, you know, the work we did, where we poured through the plan and tried to tie it down where it wasn't specific, that is what was slow getting out.
Okay. And kind of in that same day, and I'd spoken with the Community Development Director prior to the public hearing set, to see exactly what kind of timing that we were looking at, and was informed that if we actually made our decision on the 27th, that we would still be able to meet all the timelines. I'm somewhat sensitive to major property owners in and out and circling, knowing that they have a diverse group as well, that's not just one property owner person sitting there, to where I'd almost like to be able to get their perspective on the conditions that's being placed in something that will affect their investment as well. Well, no, not if we continue to actually, continue the record to get written input from Sustainable Fairview only.
Well, I'd like to ask, or just make a comment, that it seemed to me that the conditions were the result of the questions and the requirements or the requests from Sustainable Fairview, and that's what this is, I thought, in large part.
We had not, when that staff report was written, we had not seen their comments.
No, I mean, their earlier comments, which caused us to-
Yes, yes, yes.
-continue the hearing and ask staff to- ask staff to continue working with the applicant, and so, it's not new information, is it, actually? These items, LEED certification versus gold standard versus, I mean, earth advantage, and we've been talking about these things, I thought, all the way along. Haven't we?
Yes, I don't know, I don't remember any testimony earlier about the commercial uses on the property. Maybe there was, and I just don't remember, but you do have a significantly revised proposal on the table tonight. I think, though, most of the things that have been brought up, were brought up in the earlier hearing.
That's what I, that was what I thought, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions from council? All right, we'll move to the rebuttal by the applicant for five minutes, if the applicant cares to...
Madam Mayor?
To use that time. Excuse me?
If in fact, we were to continue, then this would not be the appropriate time for that rebuttal, so it almost forces me to make a motion at this time, if in fact I do want to get testimony from a large property owner adjacent to and impacted by this. With that, I would go ahead and make a motion.
Why don't we take a, just a short break?
Yeah, let's take a short break. We need to have a little discussion. Thank you.
The discussion where we left it off, and I believe that Counselor Nanki has a motion?
Actually...
Is that correct? Or are we...
I would not have a motion, but prior to rebuttal, could we actually ask if the gentleman from earth advantage could provide an opportunity for questions?
Would that be correct?
Part of rebuttal, so you need to ask the question during rebuttal, and then they can bring earth advantage up and speak to your issues.
Oh, all right, okay. Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we will now proceed to the rebuttal by the applicant, which is five minutes, and then we will have questions of the applicant following that. Is that correct?
It's part of rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You all asked really, really excellent questions, and I think one question was, you know, concerning the commercial portion of the site. And commercial has always been a vision and part of the plan. The question, more or less, was timing. Was it going to be included in this refinement plan? And it's a mixed-use zone, so the answer early on that was provided by staff was, it should be included. And so, that being a goal and desire by staff, and in accordance with the zoning, that's why it's included. With respect to being competition to the SFA property, this is a mixed-use zone, and the multifamily component they have there, this is as much competition to their commercial site as their multifamily is to this site. So, there's going to be a mix of uses throughout all these sites, and there's going to be some overlap, and then that's the way that the plan was drawn up, to allow mixed-use development, and that's the way the zoning was created. So, that, we believe that there's no conflict there. Earth advantage certification, to our knowledge, no other refinement plan has committed to any level of certification or earth advantage, LEED, or otherwise. So, this is a step that no other refinement plan has taken. It's a bold step. It's not one that the property owner has taken lightly. It's a lot of work that goes into that, and that's why we brought Peter here to talk about that. LEED was alive and well back when Sustainable Fairview did their refinement plan, and I don't believe it was committed to then. And then you had asked basically that question, and the owners here of this property are stepping up and saying, we're going to do it, we're going to get certification. We believe that's a step in the right direction that nobody else has taken, and they're going to shoot for the best they possibly can. If gold can be achieved, it'll be achieved, but as far as, you can't get too far ahead of yourself. You get too far over your ski tips, and the whole project could fail, and that's something that we don't want to have happen. We want to make sure that it can be successful, and they're confident that can be achieved with earth advantage certification. So, that's the level of commitment that's being included here.
All right. Would you, do you have questions now?
Yeah.
All right.
It sounded like he was done with the front-end portion of his rebuttal. I don't want to eat into his time with a question in regard to something else, if he can't come back to address anything else.
No, we'd appreciate any questions, so...
Did you have other things, other points you wanted to cover during your rebuttal?
Not at this time, no.
All right, well, this is the only time you have to do rebuttal.
The answer is no.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay. All right. Counselor Nanki, I believe, has a question.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, in regards to the silver, gold, and platinum, can you describe the difference between a silver and a gold certification level? Kind of what that means? Is it more insulation in something? Is it incorporation of other items, or just increased of the five or what-have-you points? And then, is there a multiplier that one could put on? If I chose to build something gold versus silver, what percentage extra does my house, my building, end up costing?
It's a little tough to answer the multiplier question, but first, let me address how green building programs work. They're always point-based, and as I mentioned before, we have five pillars of sustainability, energy, materials, health, water, and land. And what makes a green building program credible is that you have to meet a minimum performance level in each one of those five pillars. So, for instance, in energy, you have to build a building that's 10% more efficient than code in our multifamily program. In water, there's a certain number of points you have to achieve, which basically can never be achieved without low-flow showerheads, low-flow lavatory faucets, and low-flow kitchen faucets. Typically, you also have to incorporate either a smart irrigation controller for irrigation or no permanent irrigation, which gets you the most points. So, it's hard to say exactly what's going to take you from gold to platinum, or from silver to gold, but it's an accumulation of more points in all these five pillars of accountability. Sometimes, you might be addressing a measure that you didn't do at all before. Occasionally, there are some measures where for that same measure, for instance, let's call it hard surfaces in the house, you know, hard surfaces are much healthier than carpet. So, occasionally, within a measure, you can get incrementally more points if you have a greater percentage of hard surface in the house. But it is very hard to address your question, like I wish I could, because I know people want to know this, unless I had a points worksheet up on the screen and I could go over one.
A follow-up, if I may, on that one, Madam Mayor. So, the five pillars, could the difference between a silver and a gold be, the five points are all exactly the same except for one, where I've actually went to a much higher level? Can one actually jump that, or do all five pillars have to come up a bit from a baseline?
No, if you are at silver but one point away from gold, just doing one more measure would, of course, push you over to gold, but if you were at the lowest level of silver, you're going to have to do a heck of a lot more measures and a higher performance in some of the other measures to reach gold. So, it's really hard to say, because we oftentimes get a builder or a developer in multifamily who is one point away from the next measure, and one area that we exceed, I mean, one area that we excel at is education and advocacy and training our builders and developers. So, when we see that, we oftentimes will suggest, well, why don't you do this, and you'll go just that far, that much further, and you'll hit gold, or you'll go that much further and you'll hit platinum.
All right, thank you.
All right. Other questions? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. On the silver and gold and these various gradations, can you tell what this is? Is this silver, gold, I mean, or is it one of those things that you sort of find out as you're doing it, where you end up?
In this instance, it's a little early to tell, because we've not even energy modeled these buildings yet. So, until the buildings have reached a pretty definitive stage of design, and we have the specifications for the energy efficiency elements, the shell and the mechanical systems, we can't even begin to energy model them, and we're not there yet. What I have seen from the developer is an incredible amount of site infiltration. So, I was just whispering to them today, because I've seen more than I saw the last time we met, is that they are going to rack up a ton of points in those areas. It looks like hardly any of this rainwater is going to leave the site. But it's still a little early to say, is this silver, gold, or platinum, because we've not energy modeled a building yet, and we've not sat down and run through an entire points worksheet seriously. I mean, we did one just kind of as an informational tool months ago, but it's a little early.
And maybe Counselor Nanki asked this, and I wasn't sure, is, what do the cost increments look like? Or do they come across as cost increments when you move from silver to gold to platinum? Are there, I mean, have you costed that out, or does it cost out? Is it a different kind of system?
No, without a doubt, it costs you more to accrue more points, especially in energy. With water, I've kind of jokingly said, but it's true, if you don't have any irrigation, or I should say, no permanent irrigation installed, you get more water points than if you have a smart irrigation controller or low-flow irrigation, because of course, it makes more sense not to have any irrigation. In that instance, there... In that instance, there's actually a cost negative. No permanent irrigation installed. But for the most part, it does cost more in every single pillar to move up and gather more points. But we don't have a cost structure. For one, it always matters where did the developer start from? Because this is, in other words, what were their original specs, or what were they going to be doing already? And so that's one reason it's not a one-size-fits-all type of answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions by counselors? All right, then the public hearing is closed. Counselor Nanki, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would move staff recommendation with the following modification to condition number two, that actually, it will be even more so than that. But I think I can actually make that as a modification to condition number two, that all residential and commercial buildings shall achieve Earth Advantage certification to a gold level or equivalent green building certification of similar level.
So you're moving the staff report with the modification on condition two?
On condition number two, which...
So all commercial, all buildings, commercial and residential?
All buildings. So that's how I'm modifying condition number two, was to take up from commercial, from the residential that was specified inside of the applicant's submittal?
Mm-hmm.
And so it's modifying not only that the commercial buildings are included in that, but those commercial buildings would be to a level of gold as well as the residential dwellings.
Okay. Now, this is not gold LEED certified you're talking about?
Gold, Earth Advantage.
Gold, Earth Advantage.
Or equivalent.
Second.
Or the equivalent, okay.
I'll second that.
And that's, all right. So it's been moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by Counselor Bennett to adopt the, to affirm the council, the staff recommendation with the changes to, or the modifications to condition two?
Correct.
Okay? Is there discussion?
I may speak to that.
Okay.
We've kind of went round and round here a little bit, trying to figure out where this may go. Like I mentioned earlier, I was very interested in the Sustainable Fairview's position on this, opportunity potentially to extend this two weeks, give more time. As I thought, they knew when the last day that the staff report would actually hit would be Friday. On something like this, we would never have it later than Friday. So they could have been geared up to see the staff report as it came out in its entirety and reviewed that and made a formal package as far as responding to the council with their concerns as an organization. I know that's tough to do sometimes, but something of this significance coming at them, especially if they'd seen what the developer had put in, they knew when this would come. In contrast of me getting this on my desk tonight to find out what their viewpoint is, it's tough, always with timing, especially on something that we've sent back and forth a couple of times. But it's not like the opportunity was 100% absent for communication to take place and review. That being said, the entirety of the Fairview master plan, when we looked at it originally, we didn't lock in on a LEEDs or an Earth Advantage, because we really didn't know when development would take place. And we didn't want to lock ourselves into something lower than what might be the norm when it finally happened. But I know the intent was that it would be something very special and not something at the lowest potential level of a certification program. We see with the Pringle Creek community, they went way over the top. We really don't know what the sustainable portion will look like, but to take a piece of that and actually say, "We'll let it be the lowest it can possibly be," to me doesn't fulfill the extra requirements we put inside of that master plan. And that we will hold development in that entire boundary, too, as we move forward and more items come in for review and approval. So hence, at least gold did not be at the bottom for a development that was destined to be something great.
So do I understand that you just said that in future developments of the, in the Fairview, any future development plans or proposals in the Fairview area, the Fairview plan, that you would expect that then they would come to that gold standard? That that's what we would hold them to?
And we can't lock future councils to that, but as long as I'm sitting here, I will move to it for anything inside of that master plan boundary to be better than the lowest potential. Because that's what it was originally destined to be, and that's what property owners said, "We want on top of this, we want this to be world-class to show how it can be done."
Counselor Clem?
Yes, I would move a substitute motion for staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Dickey to move the substitute motion by Counselor Nanki.
Just a substitute.
Right.
Just two staff recommendations.
What does that mean? So this is not your substitute motion, your motion with...
My motion was with an additional condition to statement. Counselor Clem's substitute motion is staff recommendation as provided.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clem, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm concerned that we're changing policies. I value extremely the fact that the neighborhood and all the neighbors, to include the adjacent property, which is also the original owner of this property, had plenty of opportunity to make their comments known. We're changing the policy because the Fairview master plan does not require Earth Advantage, does not require LEEDs, it does not require a certain level. And to now have the next-door neighbor come in and say it has to be gold, where the next-door neighbor doesn't meet gold and sold the property because they, for whatever reasons, to me, I think achieving an Earth Advantage standard is a great thing. I think we should take a look at what we have. And at some point in time, we have started. But, boy, not at the very, very last 12th hour as a condition for the refinement plan, particularly as suggested by the competing neighborhood or the original property owner. So I'm very concerned that we're embarking on a practice that we have done a good job of staying away from. And if there's, once staff really understands what the difference is. I didn't get the impression that we've quantified what that really means in terms of lowering our carbon footprint and saving energy. So, yeah, let's do it, but we're not picking on this applicant. We're going to, if we're going to, you know, achieve a higher standard to meet our environmental goals, we should do it. But not at the 12th-hour request of the competing neighborhood. I strongly advocate that we not go changing rules at the last minute and that we treat all the applicants fairly. And that's why I believe staff's done a good job of taking all the things that the neighbors wanted, that the Neighborhood Association wanted, took them as assertions within their development application and made them conditions, 12 conditions. I mean, I haven't seen a land use matter with this many conditions, I don't know, ever. So I really believe that, you know, that vetting process of what everybody wants has happened to the best extent that it can. I would encourage that we move forward with staff recommendation.
Okay. Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Bennett.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to Counselor Clem's comments that my one concern with this, and I think it's great that there would be a requirement for some sort of green building certification, is just the fact that it's not, you can't quantify apples-to-apples between Earth Advantage and LEEDs or some other green building. And so that is a concern to me, that putting in there that it would be gold or the equivalent. I didn't get a sense from the people who spoke that it would be easy to identify what the equivalent would be, just because they're all a little bit different. And so that's my concern. I'm happy that it would at least have some green building certification, and we're not just leaving it to nothing. But I just think making it more specific would, could lead to problems down the road.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I'm really sympathetic with what the two previous speakers have said and would be particularly sympathetic if it weren't for the master plan. I think when you look at the master plan for Fairview, it sets out such a standard, and I didn't, this wasn't done on my watch, the only one left, I think, is Brad, who was here for that. Nobody went into this process with their eyes closed, I don't think. And certainly, the staff and the developer, too, deserve an enormous amount of credit for the amount of work that's been done to get this to this point. And this would be a really spectacular piece of work anywhere else but at this site. This is good. This is really good. I mean, this is really, really good. But when you read that Fairview plan, the thing that was outlined in it went so much further. And the property purchasers and the developers here, I know did their due diligence. I mean, they must have looked at that plan and said, "Boy, is this going to be a hurdle." And I, you know, I'm willing to go along with, and I'm really not happy about it, just the gold standard, and I hate to, it sounds odd to say that, but just the gold standard, because it takes it at least, it's like, at least they tried to jump the hurdle. You know, I'm not happy, because they certainly haven't cleared it. Been watching the Olympics too much, so it, but, you know, it at least says it took it really well beyond anything we've seen in a normal development situation. I think all the arguments, if this was X number of acres somewhere else, would work. But I think when you look at that master plan and you look at the challenges it poses, I think Counselor Nanki, along with the staff and the developer, who did, I think, just an amazing job of bringing this to us in a new fashion, we've hit, we've at least hit a mark. Not the ideal mark may be outlined in that master plan, which is pretty aspirational, but this really takes it beyond the norm. That's why I'm supporting Counselor Nanki's point of view. I think it really takes us to that point. If not, it's a really good development that could have been done anywhere else in town, and it would have fit. Although I think the staff beefed it up quite a bit. And certainly, I tell you, the thing that grabbed my attention, because it was one of the most striking images from the last, for me, from the last set of testimony, was Sue Leeson came in with a picture of a gridded street and then showed us that, essentially that against what we saw, which was, you know, apartment house, parking lot, apartment house, a parking lot. These developers, I think, have gone a remarkable distance in meeting the challenge I didn't think would be met, that Sue laid out for them. So, I mean, they deserve a lot of credit, but I don't think Counselor Nanki, in listening to the fellow from Earthwise, that Counselor Nanki is placing a challenge that is insurmountable here. It's the challenge that that plan contemplated and that our staff with these 12 conditions are really trying to enforce. I really encourage you to, for, you know, I encourage you to vote down this motion and listen again to what Counselor Nanki has suggested. I think he's really found a middle ground on this thing between that very ambitious plan and sort of not as ambitious an outcome if we vote yes at this point.
Thank you. Other comments, and then I have a comment. Counselor Nanki?
And if I can just touch on one thing. Based on my opinion, bazillion years ago when this came in originally, I would never impose these kind of requirements on a developer anywhere. This piece of property came in and asked for them. It was the same time we were hearing about a lot of smart growth. And so this, to me, became the poster child to say, "Will this new type of growth actually pencil out economically?" So this in the format of the master plan put on it would be the utopia of smart growth. If it's not financially viable, that says a lot, as far as where the future growth in the United States goes to. To take and let this step down takes away that whole experiment, and now it's just gone. Now it's a normal development that we can kind of pick and choose stuff in. This was truly supposed to be national, world-class, based on that document. And the only reason we didn't lock in a high level of LEEDs is because we didn't know how those sustainable, green programs would evolve. And so we didn't want to lock it to a lower standard, because they wanted the utmost on that piece of property. And it's a shame that some property ownership issues happened to that. But the master plan is still intact, and it still covers that entire piece of property. So that was the intent of my front-end motion and my rationale from many years ago.
Okay. I'll speak to the motion made by Counselor Clem, and I support that motion. And I support that motion for three main reasons. One is because the plan that's before us tonight is a plan that a developer has worked diligently to provide with the accommodations and the revisions to answer the requirements or the requests from the Neighborhood Association to be more in compliance with the plan for Fairview. And also, they're trying to provide what we desperately need in this community, and that is more rental housing. And we need jobs. And I think for us to sit here today and say, "You're going to have to build that to a gold standard," is to say to that developer, "Forget your bottom line, forget your plan, forget your funding, forget the cost of this, you're going to have to do it this way." I'm afraid that we're going to be chasing the opportunity right out of Fairview, right out of the city. And we won't have the much-needed accommodations that we need in the way of rental housing. And this standard of rental housing would be far greater than anything that we have anywhere else in town. And I think we have, we could, we can admire the aspirational tone and desires of the original creators of Fairview, but we also have to be realistic about what we can do today and what can be done today, and what business is willing and able and capable of doing today. And that's why I support Counselor Clem's motion. Now, I believe someone else had their hand up. Counselor, Counselor Claussen? All right. Counselor Blasey?
Thank you. I guess when I think about what Sustainable Fairview would look like, it looks like what they have brought forward this evening. It doesn't look like what they originally came forward with. And so I think they've done an excellent job of addressing the concerns, as everyone is agreed with. But a sustainable community, I think, a lot of the elements are, you know, the community living itself, and they have addressed those. You know, doing a lot of work in capital construction, you know, there's some nuances between silver and gold and all of that. And, you know, we may not be exactly at gold, or it may not be exactly there, but it is a sustainable community. It has open spaces. It addresses the wetlands issues. It addresses the height. It addresses the permeable concrete. All the things that we asked them to address, they have addressed those. And I think as we move forward with the rest of the property, you know, maybe we can then look at, do we want... we, maybe we can then look at, do we want, you know, gold for the rest of it? But we haven't asked them for that up to this point. And I think it's incredibly unfair, again, you know, the 12th hour to say, "We want it to be exactly like this." And I think they, you know, if you, if you know the difference, I think they're, they're pretty close. You know, they haven't hit every single point, but they've, you know, they've addressed what we've asked them to address.
Okay. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, I don't like arguing with one of the authors of, or at least one of the original approvers in 2004 of the Fairview master plan as submitted by Sustainable Fairview, who helped wrote it or write it. But I look at the plan, I've scanned it again, and I'm on page four, called "The Plan," and it indicates, "Build innovative green buildings while Sustainable Fairview and Associates will not itself develop all buildings on the site. It is committed to setting fair minimum energy standards," which is really the primary point of Earth Advantage versus, and Leeds, is, is carbon footprints, water, and energy, and is committed to seeking cost-effective ways. I don't see even that range in this plan, in the Fairview master plan. It was a broad-based document for the whole development. And so I don't know that it, it even says, you know, that, it doesn't obviously mention Earth Advantage or Leeds anywhere that I can see in the document. But it talks about committed to setting fair minimum energy standards, minimum meaning the lower the energy being used, probably. But I think the whole idea of that, that the Fairview master plan is somehow being abridged by staff recommendation, I just can't see it. I can't see that point. I believe that what's been, what I've seen tonight and what's in the staff report and the testimony, I would agree with Councilor Blasey, that it's not only unfair to impose that standard now, but it takes something that was written by the suggester that it be changed. It, it's not only so much unfair, but it doesn't, it still meets the intent of what we approved in 2004. So, well meets it. So, I would encourage approval of the substitute motion.
All right. Shall we move to the question? Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, if I may, just, I am good at math. I would just like to encourage, the discussion was that they may be very close to that level as it sets, and just that, I am extremely pleased with the modifications that were made. I just don't personally believe it, it takes that extra, extra step up to what this was originally intended to be. With that, I would just, if at all possible, encourage the developer to try to meet that standard if, if they in fact are very close.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Then I believe the procedure is that we vote on the amended motion, the substitute motion first.
Only.
Only.
Unless it fails.
Unless it fails. All right. I'll call for the question for, to support the, all those in favor of the motion made by Councilor Clem, seconded by Counselor Dickey, to support staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Two nays, Counselor Bennett and Counselor Nanki voting nay. The motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Shall we take a brief break so that people can adjust?
That'd be great.
And leave and refresh, and we'll be back.
All right, we will now resume our meeting. It is still August 13th, 2012, just for the record. And we're continuing public hearings. We're now on public hearing B, which is a continuation of the review of the Planning Commission's decision for the comprehensive plan change, neighborhood plan change, zone change, et cetera, for the 1500 block of Davis Road South. Does the recorder introduce this, or do we simply go right to?
No, Mayor, and I believe where we were in the course of the hearing was there were to be, the record was to be kept open for additional written submissions, and I think you are at questions of staff.
All right.
Correct.
All right. And is, which staff person is here for questions?
We have Brian Colburn, who's with the Community Development Department, is here, and I think probably Glenn Davis also is here with the Public Works Department.
Fine, thank you very much. All right. If you would, councilors, care to have any questions for staff? Did staff want to give any sort of an overview before we just go to questions?
Wasn't necessarily planning on that.
That's okay.
We did answer the questions that were raised at last, it's the last meeting, in the staff report that was provided.
Okay. I just didn't want to cut you off in case you had planned an oration for us this evening. All right. Are there, Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to catch up and maybe help anybody watching this catch up with what we're doing here. We originally had looked at this with a condition of a 50-year storm event, and now staff, after looking at this and as a part of this public hearing process, has now changed that condition to a 100-year storm event. And if staff could help me understand what that means. Bigger pipe, Battle Creek will never flood again. Why are we doing this, Glenn?
Glenn Davis, Public Works, Chief Devon Engineer. The detention requirement is what we're speaking of, and 50-year event is then the event that has a 2% chance, any given year, of occurring in a basin, and then the 100-year event would be a 1% chance. So it's a less common event, which means it's more flow. So the more flow in the event requires more volume in a detention basin. So it's not talking about pipe sizes, it's not talking about orifice sizes of controlling the flow, it's only talking about the volume in the detention systems, so that in a major event, that 100-year event, it's all retained on-site and is distributed more slowly down the system.
So it does change the original stormwater, or at least detention basin requirements? It will cause a change in the physiological, or the physical plans of what that detention basin look like?
Yes.
It'll make it bigger to hold more water?
Yeah, the applicant testified about 20%.
All right. Councilor Nanki.
I would just like to thank staff for the answers to the questions that I had, written well and understandable. Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions by councilors? All right. Hearing none, then we?
Rebuttal.
Oh, yes, we have rebuttal. And who is here? Do we have someone signed up for this hearing? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. My name is Mark Grins, and I'm with Multitec Engineering. And we were, we've been representing the applicant in this matter before you, and we were pleased to get to come back to do our rebuttal. I did submit today a written rebuttal to the questions or to the testimony that was provided. I had anticipated that there might be some other written information that was submitted, but I don't believe any other came in. So hopefully the stuff that I provided was sufficient to address the questions or the comments that had came up in the original testimony. So with that, I'd make myself available to answer any questions that you, that you have of me, and I know you got other things to do tonight, so.
Are there questions from councilors? Councilor Clem?
Sorry. What'd you say in your response?
You didn't read it, did you?
No, I haven't, I don't see it here, so. I don't want to nod my head like I did.
There was, there was a concern raised about sediment. I noted that we have to provide an NPDS permit through the EQ. There was a, John Shepard raised issues about storm sewer, I mean, storm rates, and I tried to, tried to provide some clarification to some of the issues there in terms of what, what the changes between undeveloped to single-family to multifamily meant in terms of the amount of runoff. And your question about how much storage, it takes about 15% more volume to detain a 100-year event than it does a 50-year event. And that we are providing what I believe is a runoff control that's in, that's more stringent than what the neighbors had talked about, they wanted a no-rise scenario. Well, essentially, we, we would be doing, with a 100-year stormwater detention, we would be achieving a goal that's slightly greater than that, because be it regardless of the storm event, the amount of water that comes off our site will be a five-year undeveloped rate, and that's different than what a no-rise, which is comparing undeveloped to developed conditions under each individual storm event. And then there was concern about the traffic, and of course, staff has, we have a condition to construct a traffic signal at Liberty and Davis, and with that, our traffic engineer said that, that the traffic, that intersection would function at level service C in both the AM and PM period, once the signal's in place, and that'll be better than the signal functions today. And so the neighbors should see an improvement out there, and then, of course, we're making frontage improvements along our frontage, and that should complete, there should then be a full street improvement from the Davis-Liberty Road intersection all the way to Red Bluff when we, when we get done in there. So those should help improve traffic. And of course, they get another shot at me because, or this property, because this is just the zoning, we still have to go, come back through site approval and, and design approval. So there's other opportunities to deal with the specifics of, of our layout and what our design is, but, you know, we, we're comfortable with these conditions. We've said that before, and hopefully we've addressed the concerns that council had.
Okay. All right. Councilor Claussen, did you have a question or comment?
I do. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Grins. I was hoping to get some written comment, as a lot of the other residents who testified had requested to allow this time, and yours was the only one we received. Reading through your report real quick, as I was in our break here, or your response, I'm looking at the multifamily development coefficient that you've got in there. If you, I'm, I'm still struggling to wrap my head around this, because it depends on who you talk to, it depends on who interprets it, what way. When you go from an undeveloped land to a single-family land, your stormwater is calculated as such, because single-family has less impervious surfaces, so it's, it'll be size X.
That's correct.
And then, when you go from undeveloped land to multifamily land on the same piece of property, your stormwater detention size is going to be Y, because you're calculating a different area of runoff. Is that correct?
Wait, the, the area of the site stays the same, and so the change is the characteristics of the runoff, so the more hard surface that you create, the faster the runoff leaves, and the, and the greater the peak. And so, that's, that's what I tried to illustrate, where I talked about the runoff coefficient. So undeveloped is .31, single-family is .54, and then multifamily for this type of a development, and this is consistent with multifamily sites, as we're doing them today, you get about .69. So that's, so that's the change. So there's double the amount of runoff, or more than double the amount of runoff, if you don't detain it from a multifamily site than from an undeveloped site, all things being equal. The rainfall intensity is the same, and you don't change the size of the site, then that's the, that's the impact on the runoff. So more detention is required, the more, the more intensely you develop, but the more, the more volume you have to, you have to create in order to retain.
Right. And then on top of that, now this imposition of 100-year detention then increases that size by another 20%.
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear, because some of the testimony we had heard, it was unclear how, how they were getting the math through.
I'm sure that, and I, that's why I did put that in, is I was trying to clarify that a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. Are there further questions of Mr. Grins? All right. Thank you very much. At this point, do we close the hearing? We'll close this public hearing. And Counselor Claussen, do you have a motion to present?
I do, Madam Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Claussen and seconded by Counselor Clem to move the staff recommendation. Counselor Claussen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, thank you. So as everybody knows, we had some issues with flooding in January, some major issues, and this leads straight into Wong Creek, which has issues even when we don't have major storm events. So this is something that's near and dear to my heart and a lot of the residents in my ward. And I'm concerned about the longevity of what happens in the Battle Creek Basin. I've been working with staff, and it's been put on hold a little bit for this public hearing, but been working with staff on what the long-term plan is here. We've got some ideas worked up. I need to get some more community involvement and community feedback as far as that goes, but unfortunately, I can't really do it until this reaches final decision. So that, I think in the next month or so, we'll probably be seeing some movement on, or hopefully seeing some movement on what's going to happen here in the future. This 100-year imposition is a precedent that staff will be able to communicate to future property land, property owners and developers. I'll tell you, I'll be paying attention to see if any new properties are developing in the Battle Creek watershed to make sure that we're addressing these on a case-by-case basis. This 100-year detention is a stopgap until we really get a for-real, comprehensive understanding of what's happening with stormwater in that Battle Creek watershed. So this is not the end goal, this is actually kind of a messy way to go about it, because we basically have to see it every time unless the developer volunteers to go with the staff recommendation when they verbally talk to them. So long-term, we'll be seeing a change on this, but for now, this is probably the way we're going to have to do it.
All right. Other comments from councilors regarding the motion? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I wanted to double-check on when the public hearing on this was held, or when this hearing opened, when it was last heard.
It was, maybe it was July 23rd, but I'm not sure. Is that right? July 23rd?
Madam Mayor, I was absent on July 23rd and haven't had a chance to view any or hear any record on this, so I'll recuse myself from voting.
All right. Thank you. Other councilors' comments? All right. We'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, it's been moved by Counselor Clem, Counselor Claussen, and seconded by Counselor Clem to accept the staff recommendation, which is to amend the decision of the Planning Commission and add condition three. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and the record would show that Counselor Bennett recused himself. All right. We have another public hearing before us, and that's called the Bike and Walk Salem Amendments to the Salem Transportation System Plan. And would our recorder please introduce the public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering proposed amendments to the pedestrian, bicycle transit, and street system elements of the Salem Transportation System Plan. The criteria that are applicable to the decision are the statewide planning goals, the state transportation planning rule OAR 660-012, the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, the Salem Transportation System Plan, and SRC 64.240.
Thank you. And I believe Julie Warnicki is here to do the staff presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name's Julie Warnicki, Transportation Planning Manager with the Public Works Department, and I'm here to give an overview of the proposed amendments. So first, I just want to start with just briefly telling you about all the work that went into preparing this plan, largely by a very dedicated group of volunteers who are on our advisory committee, that's shown here in the picture. There was about 20 people on that advisory committee. A number of them are here this evening, including Jeff Leach, your guest counselor, and I want to make sure that we thank them all for their hard work. The Bike and Walk Salem planning process, as we called it, was the result of a grant application that we applied for in 2009. We received funding from the Transportation and Growth Management Program, which is a program of the Oregon Department of Transportation, to update our bicycle and pedestrian elements and also do some analysis of the safe routes to school needs in our community. Throughout the process, we engaged a wide variety of the public through open houses. We also used an interactive online Google mapping tool where people could pinpoint their concerns. We had a number of small group listening, sorry, small group meetings with members of the public who don't typically maybe self-select to participate in a study like this. The one shown here is at the Senior Center. And then we also had a number of listening stations that we held throughout town. I know one that was, we got quite a bit of business at, was at Lancaster Mall. We had a lot of interaction with people who might not come out on their own otherwise. So the update to the plan, I guess first, just want to remind you all that, you know, this is the Transportation System Plan, and so what we were updating was largely, primarily the bicycle and pedestrian elements, which are contained in here. We did a review and update of the policies and also of the, I guess I'll call them tools, but facilities and tools that weren't around when this plan was originally developed, which was in the mid to late 90s. So for example, the pedestrian countdown clocks that you see around town now, those are now the standard, were not, they were not back in the late 90s. Use of paint, particularly at conflict points for the bicycle system. Bike signal, we are actually going to be installing a bike signal as part of the pedestrian safety projects along the Union Pacific Rail Line later this fall. For the bicycle network, I just wanted to highlight that we, our group was really focusing on what is shown here as the interested but concerned portion of the population. There are a lot of people out there who rode bikes as children, maybe into their teen years, and really have not ridden as an adult. And so what research has found is that the facilities that we have been planning and constructing over the last, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 years, bicycle lanes on arterials are, they're great for a certain portion of that, of the population, but they're really not so good for people who are not that experienced on their bikes, and also young people. So our efforts were focused largely on that segment of the population. And so in order to get at that, we developed a network of family-friendly bikeways. And this is also in some communities referred to as bicycle boulevards. The intent here is to have a network of lower-volume streets combined with shared-use paths that can get you to the destinations that you, people want to go to without significant out-of-direction travel, but recognizing that, you know, when you drive down the street to get, you know, go down commercial to get somewhere, it's not necessarily the same place you want to be bicycling to get to that same destination. So in developing a network of bicycle, bicycle network as well as a pedestrian network, we identified quite a few, quite a lot of projects to fully implement that system over the life of the plan. We then prioritized those projects using these eight different factors. The ones that are underlined are the ones that were given more weight, because when we went out to the public with a survey, we got input that those were the most important issues to the people we heard from. So, you know, a plan is a plan, is a plan, and I'm a planner, so, you know, a plan is important, but what does it really mean in the end? And what we want to see from this plan, and what I think this plan will provide, is that, you know, in the near to midterm, we will be looking at continuing to invest in making our community friendly for pedestrians, around schools, and also looking at where we have facilities that, while they might be there now, don't necessarily really serve their function, as you can tell by this flooded sort of asphalt pathway, I believe this might be along Silverton Road, if I remember correctly. And then wayfinding is an important part of the system. In bicycle, wayfinding is also a very important part of the system. I find that people who are used to navigating by driving don't always think about that, hey, if I go one block over, I'm going to have a much more pleasant experience. Using pavement markings, the shared lane markings, also referred to as sharrows, which we started implementing maybe 2010. And then also focusing on seeking funding for intersection improvements. We have quite a number of bike facilities in town, both low-volume streets and arterials, where we have some pretty tricky intersections that people are going to have to navigate. So this is just an example of one that needs some, needs some work and is identified in the plan. In the longer term, we are wanting to develop a broad network of facilities for people walking and bicycling, so that people of all ages and abilities are able to choose how they want to get to their destinations in town, whether that be walking, bicycling, driving, taking transit, or other modes. So I mentioned that this planning process has been going on for a couple of years. The committee largely did their work in 2010 and 2011. The adoption process started in the fall. We had a joint work session with you and Planning Commission late October. Planning Commission spent some time going over this and hearing from a lot of citizens about the proposals. Some of the areas of concern, I'd say that shared-use paths across private property were pretty, was a pretty key area of concern, and we did modify the language to try to address concerns raised by citizens. Limited funding, the fact that we have, you know, this plan that to get that complete system will cost a lot of money, and how are we going to get there? The prioritization that we did was really intended to try to address that, you know, that concern. And then skateboarding. I just want to quickly mention skateboarding. At the March 6th public hearing of Planning Commission, so the last meeting, we had a number of citizens who came to us wanting to have skateboarding addressed as a mode of transportation in the Transportation System Plan. And I've discussed this, or we've discussed this in the staff report, there's an attachment that gives some of the issues with this particular topic. It's a very complex issue involving legal, police, public works, the bicycle community, disabled community, and because this came into the process so late, we are not recommending that the TSP, at this point, address those issues, but instead that that will take additional work. work to resolve how the city wants to approach it. With regard to a couple of the proposed path connections, the project that we heard the most testimony on was what's referred to here as the Rural Hoite Connector. This is in South Salem between the Fairmont and Candelaria neighborhoods, west of Commercial Street. There is about approximately 3,000-foot stretch where you, the only way to get between the neighborhoods is either to go to Commercial Street or to go to Crestview and Sherman. And this is a very touchy issue. It has a lot of different viewpoints. We think that, what we heard from the public was that there was a strong desire for a connection, but we're not really sure how we can achieve that, given the different, the historic nature of the cemetery. And so we are recommending that this be included, but as an item that needs further refinement study. And then finally, this is an errata, or I guess a correction. The, at Planning Commission, the Planning Commission asked that the, in response to concern from Willamette University, asked that the cross-campus path be shown along the outside border of Willamette University, a portion of that, let's see. So in what you have in your materials, a portion of it actually follows the creek up to Winter Street and then goes down Winter Street and follows along the southern border of the campus. That was a mistake that we, we intended it to run along the southern border of the campus for the whole length of that. So in conclusion, the staff recommendation is to advance Ordinance Bill 2012. I like the number. Two-second reading with the change that I just referenced. And I guess before I conclude, I forgot to, I wanted to quickly introduce the, we have one member of our consultant team here this evening, Rory Renfro with Alta Transportation. And Rory was the technical lead, and he has done bicycle and pedestrian planning for many jurisdictions around the country, and so if there are any questions for him later, he's available. And with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there questions from council? Do we do questions of staff right now? Oh, you know what, we're going to wait and take our testimony from people who've signed up, and then we'll go back for questions from staff. Okay. We have quite a few who've signed up. Welcome all, and we'll start with Elizabeth Potter and then Larry Peterson.
Madam Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Elizabeth Potter, resident of South Salem, representing the Friends of Pioneer Cemetery. Seventeen acres of funerary landscape developed by the Mother Lodge of Odd Fellowship in Oregon as a charter obligation to its members and to the community. That is Salem Pioneer Cemetery. It is a park-like setting. It's not a park nor a playground. It is the final resting place of missionary founders of Salem, leaders of Oregon government both before and after statehood, and the first delegate to the Congress of the United States from our area. Pioneers, African-American pioneers, Japanese and Chinese Americans, military veterans from the War of 1812 onward, educators, women's suffrage leaders, the founding editor of our pioneer newspaper. Notables and citizens of every kind are among the 8,000 at rest in Salem Pioneer Cemetery. The town site was less than 10 years old when the burials began there in 1855. Those grounds reflect the whole history of the capital city. Is this the place that the city will modify to serve a purpose for which it was not designed, for which no space for routing a travel corridor exists without impact? Shall the sanctity of the burial ground of our thousands of forbears be negotiated away for the sake of convenience? The city of Salem accepted its role as steward of the cemetery in concert with Marion County under statutory authority in 1953. The city assumed full responsibility in 1966 and has owned the cemetery outright since 1986. That the cemetery is publicly owned has made it the attractive target for resolving a gap in neighborhood connectivity. But this special place, finally and unequivocally, must be off-limits as a place for routing a transportation corridor, however well-intended it may be. We Friends of Pioneer Cemetery, who actively support the city in its stewardship obligation, believe bicycle pedestrian elements of the TSP involving that connector is ill-advised and a betrayal of the public trust. I would refer you to my remarks, published, or printed remarks on the conflict between goal planning, Transportation Planning Goal Number 12 and Historic Preservation Goal Number 5. And also, we've pointed out that the necessity for working out solutions in a protracted planning process is not demonstrated, to our view. Opportunities, I'll just end here by saying, please do not approve the TSP bike-walk elements without amendment to remove Pioneer Cemetery from consideration as a potential project site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. Potter? Counselor Blasey?
I do have, I have a quick question. So I've been out to the cemetery and I've attended some of the walks. I guess where I get confused with what you're proposing and your comments versus what I've experienced there, because there, the times that I've been out there, there's been quite a bit of activity, you know, and you said it's not a park, but I see people walking their dogs and walking. There is a gate that's open, so I guess my question is what the difference would be from the activity that currently goes on there and is, you know, in my opinion, very respectful versus what the potential would be if the gate were opened on the other side and this became part of the walking path?
I appreciate your question. The cemetery is a public space. It is open to the public. It's accessible from sunrise to sunset. The one point of access and egress is controlled by a gate, and the place can carry a certain, has a certain capacity for public use, and when we have a light footprint, a light footprint public use by descendants of the interred who are visiting their ancestors along with the destination, or the strollers who are casual visitors who are interested in history, want to take in the environment. We have great many dog walkers friendly to that sort of public use that has a low impact. And yes, there is a lot of activity of that kind.
Thank you. Other questions of Ms. Potter?
Thank you very much.
All right, Larry Peterson, and then Karen Seewell.
Hello, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Larry Peterson. I live at 4770 Gardner Road in Southeast Salem. I am a local, local business owner, and I come for this bike-walk big plan that we would like to make skateboarders and longboarders part of that plan, because we feel that as longboarders and skateboarders and as a community that is continually growing, along with college campuses and high school kids and middle school and even grade school kids, to be able to include us in this plan as far as, so that we have kind of a standing of, you know, where we know that we can skate and where we know that we can't. And so there's that, you know, line of what we know we can do and what we can't, which we don't have now. There's areas that we know we can skate, and there's areas that say we can skate on the sidewalks, there's areas that say we can't skate on the sidewalks. We just want to have, to be included with bikers as a mode of transportation because that is what is being developed in our community. In the longboarding community especially, a lot of transportation is a big part of it. It's something that you can easily park somewhere, skate, get on the bus, take your board on the bus, and be able to skate to different areas. We're just not linked in with the biking community, which we feel that we should be.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Peterson? Yes, Counselor Dickey.
Hi, thanks for coming down. Yeah, I am curious to know, and this is an issue that's, I'm concerned about this as well, so I'm kind of curious to know if you know, like, have a sense for, it's, you said it's kind of a growing thing, people are using this more and more, so are there, wait, let me ask, it's not going to work to ask it that way. So are there just a lot of people starting to use skateboarding as a mode of transportation more than just for recreation? So to get from point A to point B, skateboard, longboard, or similar?
There is, more in the, in the longboarding realm, because we use a softer wheel that just rolls smooth over concrete, unlike a skateboard wheel, which is harder. So there is a lot of kids that use it, you know, to get to school, to, you know, go to the store, just random transportation, even to skate downtown. A lot of us gather in spots and then we skate around town. But we don't know exactly, okay, where officially can we skate, and if we can't skate there, why? And, you know, we just want to be linked in with this, this plan, because it is a 20-year plan, and our industry is growing rapidly. You know, it's, it's fun. It's good exercise, and a lot of kids are getting out and doing that and enjoying the time.
Yes, Counselor Dickey? Yeah, thanks. Where do you normally skate, and like, do you normally skate on the sidewalk or the bike lane, or what, what do you normally do?
We normally skate in the street.
In the street, okay.
And if there's a bike lane, like, if we're on a busy street, it's in the bike lane. But there is areas that we don't know that we've been told, oh, you can't skate in the street, you have to skate on the sidewalk, and we also get the opposite, saying you can't skate on the sidewalk, you have to be in the street. And so we want to be linked in with the bike and be able to follow these bike paths and, and let other skateboarders and longboarders know, this is the path that you can take. This is a safe path.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carrie Miles, and then Gabriel James.
Thank you very much. That's Larry, not Carrie.
Larry, welcome.
Larry Miles, 829 Pioneer Drive, Silverton. I am the president of the Salem Bike Club. For the last four years, I've been ride coordinator for the Monster Cookie Metric Century, and I'm also on the committee to improve the Willamette Valley Scenic Byway. Bicycling Magazine recently rated the city of Salem as number two, number two in the country as the best bike city in America. That's totally awesome. Portland was number one, and Eugene was number eight, but we're doing a good job so far, no question about that. Salem Bike Club has about 450 members. We have rides all the time. We have a novice ride once a month, and that's just strictly for beginners. And, you know, if you could probably say that SBC riders would be considered strong and fearless, according to the bike plan, we're enthused and confident, but my concern is the, the interested but concerned rider, which is at least 60% of the potential riders out there. This plan is a really good first step. I fully support this plan, and I look forward to it being enacted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Nanke, and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Larry. Question in regards to the previous speaker, did bicyclists have any problem sharing those areas where bikes are with skateboards?
I wouldn't think so. I did have some requests from skateboarders that wanted to ride on the Monster Cookie, but for liability purposes, we had to say no. Yeah, it's just strictly for bicyclists. But I've never run into a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Clem?
At that same, it's already answered, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Gabriel James, and then Alex Phillips.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle James. I live at 4434 Campbell Drive, Southeast, over, off of Lancaster by the Home Depot. I work as a coordinator for the Biology and Chemistry Departments at Willamette University, and I just started riding my bicycle last week. I am a mom of two, and my family has one car. It has been a challenge to share one vehicle with all the transportation needs of my family. I have had a bike for a few years, but have never really ridden it. I, until last month, I was working in a professional law firm where the idea of biking to work wasn't really all that supported. I am part of that 60% that has been interested in riding a bicycle but needs some more support from my community. Willamette University has strongly encouraged biking and works towards a more sustainable lifestyle, so I thought I'd give it a shot. My route to Willamette is almost five miles. I take Lancaster up to State Street, and I turn left onto State Street, which has been kind of a wacky thing to do. Do I ride in the bike lane? You know, you turn left in, in the car lane, but then how do I get over to the right, to the bike lane from there? There are lots of spots in my commute where the bike lane is there and then it stops. I kind of track over to some of the more residential streets to find a nicer area to ride. I'm very new to biking, but I actually really love it. It's a wonderful way to see Salem, to see people, to see other people on the road. There, when I am on State Street and I get closer to downtown, there's no longer a bike lane, so do I ride on the sidewalk, or do I anger a lot of the drivers, making them swerve around me? I'm really slow, like, really slow. So I think this is a great plan, and I strongly support it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight and telling us your story, your adventure. And are there questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. Alex Phillips?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Councilors. Alex Phillips, I'm the Bicycle Recreation Coordinator at State Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm here to speak about the, the parts of the plan that touch on parks and recreation programs and lands. I also live in Salem. I live at 1311 Chemeckata Street Northeast. I ride all over Salem, or actually just most places. So for the record, I'm in the enthused and confident. I am not the strong and fearless. There are parts of Salem I will not ride in. But back to the State Parks and Recreation Department, we have a goal of promoting recreation. So we strongly support the parts of the plan that do deal with state properties. The State Capitol State Park is one of the probably most biked-on parts of all of Salem, and the parts of the plan that would improve that, both going through the flag area and over what, the Chemeckata Street, we do support. We also support the, the proposal for the bike path through the fairgrounds. That would be a wonderful connector. There would be some details that would have to be worked out to protect parts of the fairgrounds that shouldn't be accessible at all times, but we're looking forward to working with the city staff, which we've had a really good relationship with, to work out those details. So that would be a wonderful thing to, to have happen, to have a bike path through the fairgrounds. The last part is the Willamette Valley Scenic Bikeway, which Larry Miles referred to. It is the very first scenic bikeway designated by the state, not only the very first in Oregon, but the very first in the country. There are now nine scenic bikeways, and I have these brochures to pass out, if I may, that explain the program. There's nine scenic bikeways, very carefully picked throughout the state, that Oregon State Pa- Parks and Recreation Department and Travel Oregon are working very hard to promote. And there's been many articles promoting riding through Salem, and you can talk to business owners about the increased business because of this. Cycle tourism and cycle recreation is a not very well-recognized but growing part of the tourism industry, which brings money and visitors to Salem. And the plan would put in improvements that are on the Willamette Valley Scenic Bike Way. So we support that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming down to testify this evening. Councilors, are there questions? All right, thank you very much, and thanks for the brochure. That's very helpful. Malcolm Snyder, and then Allison Fisher. Is Mr. Snyder here?
I'm here, and I didn't sign up to talk.
Oh. All right. Then Allison Fisher?
Hi, good evening. My name is Allison Fisher. I live at 680 LaFell Street Southeast. I'm a chemistry professor at Willamette University. I'm also a member of the university's Sustainability Council, which enthusiastically supports increased biking and walking in Salem. I applaud the efforts of the city of Salem to promote and support active transportation. My family and I moved to Salem just two years ago. After almost a decade teaching at a small college in rural Vermont, I made the switch to Willamette University. Willamette's urban setting and proximity to downtown were definite selling points for me, and my husband and I paid a premium for a smaller house in a walkable neighborhood near campus where we could walk more, bike more, and drive less. Our entire family bikes daily, including our six- and nine-year-old kids, who have been very patient tonight. I guess we're in the enthused and confident category, although my son's a little overconfident these days. You'll see him riding no-handed down the streets. We share one car for longer trips, and some weeks, our car never leaves the driveway. With our carlight lifestyle, we move our bodies more, we experience our surroundings at a human pace. We reduce our impact on the planet, we save money, and we consume consciously, all incredibly important values to teach our children. And we are not alone. As you know, a recent survey by the city of Salem showed that over 80 percent of Salem residents would make more trips on foot or by bike if they felt safer doing so. Across America, people are driving less. According to one study conducted by the Frontier Group on drivers ages 18 to 34, 45 percent said they were making a conscious effort to drive less, and 64 percent said they would prefer not to drive at all if other options were available. So I hope City Council will embrace this trend, because it points the way for a more sustainable future for transportation in our city, a future marked by smaller roads, healthier lifestyles, cleaner air, and less need for expensive projects to increase the capacity for motor vehicles on our roads. So it's getting pretty late. So I'll just leave you with a quote from Portland's award-winning traffic engineer, Rob Birchfield. He said, "Bicycling infrastructure is relatively easy to implement and low cost compared to other modes. It is by far the most cost-effective way to provide for personal mobility in an urban transportation system." So think about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Fisher? Thank you very much. And Kurt Fisher, and then Paul Saucy.
I'm Kurt Fisher. I also live at 680 LaFell Street Southeast, and I just want to reiterate some of the comments that I made in my written testimony. Thank you for all the hard work on the bike and walk plan. I think it's an important step forward for our city for all the reasons that my partner just iterated there. There's a couple points that were brought up in the first hearing in the Planning Commission back in November regarding Policies 3.1 and 3.2. This is the encouragement and education portion of the plan. Those portions in the bike element of the plan are not as balanced as the pedestrian element regarding who receives the education. All users of the road need to receive education equally, both drivers, walkers, and bikers. The language in the pedestrian element is more balanced. The language in the bike element leans too heavily on the biker to correct problematic behaviors, so that needs to be corrected. The term accident is used too liberally throughout the document. This is a term that's been largely retired by transportation planning professionals in favor of the word crash. Accident implies something that is essentially an act of God and is unpreventable, whereas most crashes are the result of something that one or the other user of the road did to lead to that crash. If you look at, if you search ODOT accident statistics, it will lead you to the ODOT Crash Reporting site. ODOT uses the correct terminology in Social Salem. And the last point that I want to make is regarding implementation. We've had bike and walk, we've had the bike and pedestrian elements on the books for, I believe, 15 years since 1997. Those goals set out for the city to triple the bike mode share by 2015, double the walk mode share by 2015, and we just have not made any measurable improvements or any measurable steps toward achieving those goals. So implementation is very important. The last point that I want to make is regarding downtown, because downtown and the close-in neighborhoods that exist on the outside the superblocks are where I think the best potential is to make the biggest impact on the bike and walk mode share, because that's where the greatest interest is, that's where the major employers are, that's where Willamette University is, that has a large portion of the population that bike and walk. And that's where we have the greatest available right-of-way available to do really first-class bike infrastructure. Thank you very much for your work on the plan.
All right, are there questions? All right, thanks very much for coming to testify this evening. Paul Saucy, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Saucy. I'm a resident on Fairmont Hill, where this white rural corridor is that's so controversial. I'm also an attorney. I'm here to ask you to not put the path through Pioneer Cemetery. Now, Ms. Potter had her written materials to you early in the week. I know you have a lot of paper to look at, but I hope you got the opportunity to look at it. She's much more diplomatic than I am as an attorney. She set forth in that paperwork a number of legal criteria that I don't think have been soundly looked at. You see, the Fairmont, I mean, the Pioneer Cemetery is not a vacant lot. It's a historical landmark, and as a historical landmark, there are certain procedures that need to be followed that we don't think were followed, and they're set forth in Ms. Potter's paperwork. Counselor, you asked, gee, I go up there, and there's people there, and they seem to be having a good time. Exactly. The thing is that the people that enter the cemetery are there because that is their destination. That's where they're going. And because you're going to a cemetery, there's a certain decorum, there's a certain style of behavior that you naturally have. There was a time in our community when the cemetery was not fenced, and the newspaper talked about it as a sorry blight on the city of Salem. It was an embarrassment. Well, the fence was eventually put up, access was controlled. Now we pay, the city pays somebody that owns the local cemetery, I mean, private cemetery right next door. He watches that, and he shuts the gate, because he's got an economic interest in doing so. But those people who would utilize a corridor are by definition treating the cemetery as an obstacle to overcome. They're not there for the purpose, they're there to get through it. So they're not going to conform to the same methodology or the same behavior that other people would. And the city's going to spend $144,000 to go through that? It seems like an odd expenditure to me. I've heard some of my neighbors say, gee, we really want that, because that gets me able to walk to my favorite health food store. Well, hopefully, in these economic times, that's not what the justification is. We heard about skateboarding. Skateboarding's a lot of fun. That's going to be a paved downhill slope in a setting that you're not going to be able to monitor, and you're going to put up lots of signs that say, no skateboarding here, not going to do any, not going to do any good. And who's going to watch that other gate? Who's going to make sure that's closed? We're pretty close to South Salem High School. You know what high school kids do when they get into an unprotected area like that, and there's lots of corners, there's lots of places to go? And we heard about it being a dog park. What happens is, that is the largest and most accessible, non-leashed area of dog running in our city. It's not supposed to be, but it is, because it's fenced, and it's right downtown. If you open this up, is the city going to start enforcing leash laws? I'd ask you to review Ms. Potter's written materials and take the cemetery out of the plan.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Saucy? I'm saying your name incorrectly, aren't I? I apologize. Could you please pronounce it for me?
It's Saucy, and I'm telling you, you're not the first.
Thank you, Mr. Saucy.
I doubt you'll be the last either.
Well, I'll try to not do it again. Councilors, questions? All right, thank you very much for coming to testify. All right. Nick? I have to put my glasses on here and see if I can read your writing. Nick Foley?
Forty.
Forty, all right. And then Gary Obree?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Nick Forty. I reside at 2165 Turner Street Northwest in Salem, and I'm the Traffic Chair for the West Salem Neighbor Association. But first off, I'd like to thank the city and the task force for doing all the hard work of developing this plan. I think it'll have a major positive impact on travel choices in the Salem area, and I think that's a very important step for us to take. We previously made comments during the Planning Commission deliberations on the bicycle and pedestrian plan. I would ask that those suggestions be considered anew. But tonight, I want to sit before you, stand before you, and basically set out a couple of what I think are some important opportunities that the plan could further take and take advantage of. Where these fit is really, to me, less important than how the plan might be strengthened by more active consideration of these. And so I'll just go over these, and there's just seven items here. The first is to emphasize the importance of removing barriers to both pedestrians and bicyclists, and developing mitigation to minimize the negative impact of barriers. And I just think from our own, I guess, perspective as West Salem Neighbor Association, I think you're very well aware that there's a lot of gaps that we've got in our pedestrian and bicycling network, and we just recognize that those are important things, and we've been trying for a long time, working with the city, to try to surmount those. We think it's just important to really emphasize that point in the plan itself. The other thing is, and this is also something that I think has been echoed in our development in West Salem, is looking more upfront planning to integrate bicycling and walking very early in design and in the code language, so that we don't end up trying to solve problems after the fact with traffic calming add-ons. I think that's a really important addition that the plan could take. The other thing is be more direct about establishing priorities for bicycle and pedestrian crossings. In some cases, bicycles, pedestrians, and transit users should have the priority, and we think the policy ought to clearly say that. The other one is to have the city work with the Transit District to ensure transfer facilities work and are safe. The other one is to develop strategic pedestrian and bicycle routes in the urban core and to outlying communities. We think this should have an important impact, not only on increasing the amount of commuting traffic, but making that important tie-in to communities adjacent to Salem. And the sixth point I'd like to make here is, again, another opportunity here, and this is taking much more assertive posture to work with the school district. We think this is an area where there are huge gains to be made, and generational changes which can be very significant. This should include a Safe Rest to School program, and design and operations at schools, and the development of safe travel plans for every school in the district. And finally, we'd like to have the city actively encourage biking and walking, and we'd like to think about something that makes really some creative things and being innovative. Think about longer-distance travel routes, think about street closures for special events, think about hosting an internet site which would enable users, pedestrians, and cyclists to map out journey plans. I think there's a lot of opportunities in here. We'd like to thank you for the work that's been done, but we'd really like you to do careful consideration of these points to make the plan even better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions by councilors? All right, thank you for coming down. We appreciate your testimony. Gary Obree? And then Jennifer Eskridge?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try to pull up a few slides here. I think I might need some help with that. Let's see. Can I escape out of that? Yeah, let's see. Oh, I think you put it here. Okay. That one? Okay. Again, yeah, my name is Gary Obree. I live at 2045 Laurel Avenue in the Highland Neighborhood, a great neighborhood in our city. Wanted to just start off first by thanking the city staff, and Rory, and the consultant team for their great work on this plan. I'm very supportive of it. I think it's a good plan. I think it moves the city in the direction we need to go. So I'll step through a couple of things here real quick. Julie found this same slide, and so we've seen that before, but yeah, we are talking about the interested but concerned, and I think the plan really does get at that. So I have some slides here about what these facility types look like that we're talking about. Yeah, the bike lane really doesn't appeal to too many people. A lot of times, they're narrower than what's shown on this slide. You know, maybe the car lanes are even narrower. It can be rather uncomfortable, but it's what we have in a lot of places. Yeah, would you ride there with your 10-year-old child? I know I wouldn't take my 10-year-old there. I'm okay, I can navigate that, I can ride a pretty straight line, but my little son is probably going to wobble around a little bit. So that doesn't work good for too many people in our community. And I think the plan recognizes that, particularly with the family-friendly bike ways. You know, with low speeds for the cars, it just becomes a whole lot more doable for The plan does mention some of the newer concepts that have come out, like the buffered bike lane. This is just where you can add a little bit of paint between the bike lane and the cars. Makes it a lot more doable, so perhaps we'll see that in our community someday. I think this would fall under the enhanced bike way category that is shown in the plan. And even better than that, might be a cycle track. And so cycle tracks are mentioned in the plan. I was on the, you know, the Citizens Advisory Committee for the plan, pushed for that pretty hard. And part of that came out of my experience in Copenhagen. It's my wife bicycling away there, but you can see how that, to me, that looks pretty comfortable. You know, we rode those kinds of facilities all over Copenhagen, had a great time. Typically, can't get the wife to ride her bike so much in Salem, just, you know, with the bike lanes and issues with that, but she was quite comfortable, you know, on the cycle track in Copenhagen. So still a place for cars, still a place for trees, still a place for, you know, the cars that are on the road and the pedestrians, but everybody has their place, and it worked One of the key research things that has come out recently is how much nicer, or how much more likely people are to ride on a separate facility. So I was looking at the green bars with this.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, but your time is up. Did we start his timing from the time that he started talking? I hope.
Mayor, the time always starts after they mention their address.
Okay.
Oh, thank you very much.
Picture of the wife, picture of the parents.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Are there questions from Council? Councilor Nanki, and then Councilor Clem?
And I would be happy to answer some questions.
I was just going to make sure that the entirety of his presentation got put in the record.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That way we make sure we get it all as well.
Okay.
Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Gary, just, can you sum up in just two short phrases what you're trying to, I think one of the things you're saying is, stop building these little skinny bike lanes.
Yes, thank you.
And what's the other thing you're trying to say?
Let me move to way. I was going to say there. Yes, the desirability of separated bike ways is important.
Okay.
I think the plan falls a little bit short in saying that those are really important. I mean, it recognizes that they're good, but I'd like to see that strengthened. I'd like to see the plan give the staff, I'm going to skip that one and go to the next one. I'd like to see the plan insert some language that prioritizes bicycle and pedestrian travel on those family-friendly bike ways. So that means, you know, our city staff and people come to an agreement that those are, you know, those are the important routes for bikes, and those are the ones we want to try to set up best for bikes. So I think the plan maybe falls a little bit short there, but it recognizes the intent of those. But I want to see, I'd like to see city staff, you know, turn some stop signs. I'd like to see the city staff be a little more aggressive. I'd like to see the city staff be a little more aggressive in trying to calm traffic on those family-friendly bikeways. That's how they work.
Thank you very much. Council Dickey?
Thanks for coming down. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you can handle it because you're a transportation guy. So I'm curious to know about your thoughts on skateboarding. Important to include in this plan is part of, you know, an alternative mode like bicycling. Any thoughts on that?
I wish I had some better developed thoughts. What I will say is it seems partly like a legal issue and I haven't read the staff report about the skateboarding issue and that would be good to read, maybe. I'm not sure what they said, but in my experience, yeah, it's a legal issue and a lot of the legal things are decided by the state vehicle codes. And so I'm not sure how the city can address that in here. The plan could perhaps, you know, say that skateboarding is an important mode of transportation, that it can provide a way for people to get from A to B, and that maybe there are some improvements the city can make on multi-use paths or in places in the city. We could spend a little bit of money to make it work better for skateboards. We don't have to necessarily get into the legal problems with that, but we could make the facilities better, I think.
Okay, thank you very much. Jennifer Eskridge?
Eskridge.
Eskridge, thank you. Jennifer Eskridge. And then Kathleen Dewana.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Eskridge and I'm with the Marion County Health Department. I'm here to provide you some information on how the built environment can impact healthy living and physical activity. And a copy of my comments are being passed around for your reference.
Thank you.
Chronic diseases like obesity, heart disease, and diabetes plague our community at an increasingly alarming rate. Nearly 66% of Marion County adults are overweight or obese. Only half of Marion County adults meet CDC-recommended guidelines for physical activity. Those who live in low-income neighborhoods are at a disproportionate risk of poor health outcomes because they are less likely to have access to healthy food options and to parks and public spaces. Well-designed communities can improve the health, the physical health of our population and promote health equity through improved access to public services and healthy food and safe places to live, work, and play. For example, design elements that address the continuity and connectivity of sidewalks and streets. Improve street lighting and infrastructure that increases safety of street crossing. Use of traffic calming approaches and traffic slowing devices to increase use of sidewalks and roadways by pedestrians and bicyclists. Increased access to public transportation so residents can get to grocery stores and farmers markets to purchase healthy foods. Facilitating access to safe, accessible, and affordable places for physical activity like parks and multi-use pathways. To summarize, mindful construction of the built environment can play a critical role in addressing our community's health problems and lays the groundwork for preventing new ones. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Are there questions? All right, thank you. Kathleen Dewana and then Bonnie Hesch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Kathleen Dewana. I live at 1045 Fifth Street Northeast in Salem, Oregon. I'm here requesting that you amend the Bike Walk Plan ordinance to remove references to shared use paths or pedestrian paths through Pioneer Cemetery or City View Cemetery from the Transportation Systems Plan. The text box language in this plan now, the latest plan unfortunately clouds the title of every property abutting the north boundary of Pioneer and City View Cemetery. Every owner wanting to sell their property in their seller's property disclosure statement would, under this text box, have to affirm that there are governmental studies, designations, zonings, overlays, surveys, or notices that would affect their property. Then the owner would likely have to get a determination from the city of Salem that their property is or is not a potential site for cemetery crossing. It's really not possible at all to get that kind of decision from the city within the timeframe of a sale agreement on a home. Okay? Shared paths and pedestrian access across Pioneer Cemetery and City View Cemetery have been before council for years now, and each time council has asserted clear public policy to protect and respect the culture of historic Pioneer Cemetery disallowing public access transportation or transportation corridor across the cemetery. Please reaffirm those past and recent decisions and remove references to crossing the cemeteries from the Bike Walk elements of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Dewana? All right, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Heitch, 594 Rural Street South, and appreciate the great effort that has gone forward in developing the Bike and Ped Plan. It's been a long time coming. I know that there were efforts that began in the early 2000s that kept kind of not going forward and I'm glad that it's finally here. There's lots of great, good, new policy in here and I hope it'll help other connectivity through the city as a whole and improve livability. I'm also very supportive of a proposed pedestrian connection between Fairmount Neighborhood and Candelaria Neighborhood. You've heard me testify before. This planned connection has had some discussion over the course of the development due to different procedural requirements that have come before council. Different people have different opinions about the use of the cemetery, but the current Pioneer Cemetery that has been adopted expressly allows the use of the cemetery for walking, jogging, and dogwalking. And the cemetery, as noted, is extensively used both for walking, jogging, and dogwalking. So access to the cemetery is limited only to those who live on the south side now and it restricts any access from the north side to do those same sorts of things. I recognize that the cemetery is a very sensitive and cultural resource and that any connection through or adjacent to it would need to be carefully planned and coordinated with the Friends of Pioneer Cemetery. And Ms. Potter has indicated in the past, I think it was in one of her letters that she submitted tonight, that certain things would need to be considered very strongly, one being that needs to be gated and restricted access, another being that the type of paving material would need to remain the same. I mean, it was even noted that the cemetery, this barrier for the cemetery only became an issue since the 80s when the fence went up. It was designed to allow people to pass through and had passed through in the past. In other communities where there are historic cemeteries like in Eugene and in Corvallis, there with through-sensitive design, cemeteries have become part of the fabric of the community and are used for walkways and bikeways through. There are a number of other people in the audience that are here, probably not signed up to testify, that live in my neighborhood who would like to just use and have access into the cemetery as a destination as well. So I would offer and hope that we could continue the discussions for pedestrian connection. We certainly could sit down and roll up our sleeves with Friends of Pioneer Cemetery. I am quite certain that there's a positive solution to all of this and hope that you would affirm the plan as proposed and that we could then, through the refinement plan process, work through some of the details to make an appropriate path in connection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions by counselors? All right, thank you very much. Victor Dodier? Is that correct? Dodier?
Victor Dodier.
Victor Dodie, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and members of the council. I'm Victor Dodier. I am the president this 2011, or 12, 13 cycle for the South Central Association of Neighbors. I am here to express the scan support for the bicycle and pedestrian plan, including the option of keeping open for further study connection between rural and HOPE. We, this, the Bike-Ped Plan was one of the lively topics of discussion last year. We have two lively topics. One of, the other one was the connection or the use of the church park or the former school blind property. But this one, this one has been fairly extensively discussed and neighbors decided to support the Bike Plan with the option of, for further study of a connection between rural and HOPE.
Thank you. Are there questions by counselors? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony.
Good evening. My name is Gretchen Stone. I live at 1945 Fairmont Avenue South. And I am just here to speak in support of staff's report and their recommendations for the TSP and the Bike-Ped Plan, especially the connection between rural and HOPE. I think that, well, first of all, I think it's important to maintain it, to research possible improvements that could be made, not for convenience, but for safety. I also think it's important to maintain options that would allow for a possible solution to meet the goals of the city's TSP and the Bike-Ped Plan. So I encourage council to approve staff report as submitted.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Stone? All right, thanks very much. We appreciate you coming down and testifying and waiting until the end. All right, is there anyone else wishing to testify that perhaps wasn't able to sign up? All right, now, we do need a motion to continue. Council Bennett?
Madam Mayor, let me look at this real quick. I move 20 minutes.
20 minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Council Bennett, seconded by Council, was it Clausen? Council Nanki. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Would the nays please raise your hands so we get the vote? One, two, three. All right, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're in the middle of this process. We now have, we, yes, Council?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 you're fine. You're fine, Council Bennett. You're just fine. I wasn't sure if we had questions for, oops, staff. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do we have questions for staff at this point or we just simply go right to our motion?
Well, I'm not sure what, Council Bennett.
All right, Council Bennett?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I move, I move, is this a public hearing?
Yep.
I move we close the public hearing and have staff set a date certain for action on this, what do you call it?
Deliberations.
Deliberations, thank you.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Council Bennett, seconded by Council Clem to move to?
Close the public.
To close the public hearing and then continue deliberation to a date set in the future. Is that correct? All right, Council Dickey?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. So when will we have opportunity to ask questions of staff?
Under this, you would not.
Deliberations.
Why is that?
Because the hearing is closed.
That's why I was going to have questions of staff before we close the hearing.
So the question is, do we continue the public hearing or just let people ask what questions they have?
Okay, I'll withdraw with the okay of the second. I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, so now we're going to have questions of staff?
Actually, that's.
After that, I'll close the hearing. Okay. Questions of staff?
Madam Mayor?
Council Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move we continue the public hearing to a date, a date to be set by staff in the future.
Second.
And would we have questions of staff when we continue the hearing?
Okay. All right, moved by Council Bennett, seconded by Council Clem to continue the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have one more public hearing. Oh, we just need a motion, okay.
Separated.
Okay, we're back in session. Council Clausen, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move on Agenda Item 4D, Order Number 2012-17-UGA. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Clausen and seconded by Council Nanki to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Council Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I was absent on July 23rd and have, when the public hearing was held and have been unable to, I don't know, listen or view the public hearing on this.
All right, thank you.
So I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries and note that Council Bennett recused himself from the vote. All right, we move to Special Orders of Business or unfinished business. We have none.
Yay.
And none. Information reports are in your packet and available online for the public and I'd like to note the addition of Item 7C, the volunteer hours. Discussion, actually, we're just going to announce that we have a volunteer recognition event scheduled and we're certainly hopeful and inviting the public to join us. And the date is Wednesday, August 22nd. We hold this event at the Salem Civic Center in our Peace Plaza and it's a very special awards ceremony. We start with music and food at 5:00, the ceremony at 5:30. Encourage all who can to join us for the evening. Last year, I think, was a lovely event and they were in previous years as well. So we hope to see you all there and hope to see all the counselors there. We certainly do treasure our volunteers and look forward to being able to recognize them. Okay, we have a second reading on an ordinance. Would the recorder please introduce the ordinance and take the vote?
Ordinance Bill Number 2112, providing a one-time amnesty program declaring an emergency. Council Clausen?
Aye.
Council Dickey?
Aye.
Council Thomas?
Aye.
Council Blasey?
Aye.
Council Clem?
Aye.
Council Bennett?
Aye.
Council Tesler is absent. Council Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have public comment. We do have an individual signed up for this evening. Tim Cowan? Is Mr. Cowan still with us?
Yep.
Welcome, there you are. I saw you earlier. Welcome.
My dad would want me to come out.
Yes, yes. You may come and introduce yourself, give your name and address. You have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, it's the end of two.
I'm coming by.
Oh, all right, well, someone will help you. The light on your right is the amber light and then the one next to that, that's going to flash in a minute, that's the one, that's the red one. Okay.
My name is Tim Cowan. I reside at 3160 Dogwood Street South in Salem. My comments are about Deluxe Ice Cream, the closure of the facility. And just as a, excuse me, some comments to establish my expertise. I retired from First Interstate Bank of Oregon as a senior vice president and regional manager covering Mid Willamette Valley, Central, and Eastern Oregon. He was about 52 branches, 500 employees, and over a billion dollars in assets. An additional assignment, I was in special credits where we worked on any commercial loans where the exposure was over a million dollars. Chrysler. Chrysler was an example. Like, that hasn't come up recently. And then, I was manager of Salem Main Branch and Deluxe Ice Cream was a customer. Well, my comments are really about the article that appeared on Thursday, the ninth, where it talked about that, that it would take millions to modernize the plant. There was no place to expand. The facility was too old. Oh, and it was surrounded by homes and close to the city. You would think the company would have done some due diligence before they purchased it. So I don't think that's anything that's new to them. Here's my question to the city. We have an organization like Sedcor, which I was familiar with a long time ago. Do we have a program for retention of companies? Do we have a program where if a company gets in trouble, they can ask for assistance to help them through their problem? Because anytime there's going to be growth, it's going to be a combination of attracting new but also retaining the current companies. I think it would have been very easy to maybe address Deluxe Ice Cream. Did we talk to the bankers, suppliers, the customers to find out if there were things that could have happened to retain the company and save the employees? That's my question.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your coming down this evening and I appreciate the question that you posed. I must tell you, others on the council have posed the same question in the last few days and we all share a great concern about the loss of the jobs and the loss of that fine company to, to our community. We do have a relationship with Sedcor and we work very closely with Sedcor to address retention and expansion of existing businesses. And I'm not sure at this moment what the, what steps Sedcor may have taken or what opportunities there may have been to discuss with the business, the actual next steps that they could have taken in order to stay here in the community. But I really, I, I respect your comments and your questions. I appreciate you coming down tonight to share those with us. Do other councilors have questions or have thoughts that they want to make on this? Yes. Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These are just exactly the questions that I've been asking here at City Hall and I'm hopeful, Madam Mayor, that, and Madam City Manager, that we will have Sedcor reporting to us on its strategies for expansion and retention and kind of what, what went on here because this was really, this is 100 extremely important jobs in my ward. A lot of the folks walk to those jobs. It's just a real disturbing situation, I think, to all of us. I really appreciate you bringing it up and I hope we can have some report from Mr. Bursted on what's going on with this kind of activity.
Yes, Counselor. At your request, I have asked Mr. Bursted to do that. He was here at the beginning of the meeting but the meeting was going to be so late that I asked him to come at a different night.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming this evening. Oh, wait a moment. Counselor Nanki has a question or comment?
Yeah. Thank you for coming down as well. Similar, but, you know, Sedcor is not the city of Salem either. We helped fund them to do certain elements, but were we ever contacted? And so did we have any opportunity to, to resolve any issues that could have been, you know, a barrier just from city regulations or, or things that we could have done to help as well? I had a lot of folks that I'd known over time that, that had worked there as well. But, you know, if somebody doesn't come ask us and say, "We're having problems. Is there anything you can do to help?", then we can't really do anything. So it's more who was contacted, when and did we have an opportunity?
No, I didn't have any contact.
And we did not at the city and Sedcor did not have any information either. Sometimes companies make decisions and want their employees to know about it first, you know, depending on what they think their future will be. We're concerned about it, concerned about keeping those jobs or similar jobs. And then, one of the things I've asked Sedcor to do is look at some alternate uses for that site to see if there may be other opportunities there.
Okay. Can I, if I can follow up on that?
Yes.
So Sedcor was, had not been contacted and it took them by surprise as well?
That's right.
Okay.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tim, your question's interesting but it, it implies that the city should have a program, a safety net program for companies that are in trouble. Is, is that what? I understand that you have a question, but I think you're making a point. And I want to make sure that I understand what your point is. Is that it? The city should have a safety net program for troubled businesses?
If I understand the definition of safety net, I think the city should be proactive and that we should have known a long time ago that there were issues and that if not resolved, the company was going to be closed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure that companies feel, feel entirely comfortable with sharing their financial distress with a city or any government, but, and I'm not sure we should impel them to, but the point's well made that if there were a program or there were a way of identifying this stuff early on, then more resources could be brought to bear to include the state of Oregon.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you again. We do appreciate you coming down and we do appreciate you raising the issue. I certainly am aware of instances where Sedcor or where departments of the city of Salem have been able to work with a company that needed either adjustments in the type of, maybe it was the access to the business and, and changes in traffic patterns would, would be helpful. We've also had instances where funding can be provided either through toolbox loans or other kinds of, of loan programs. So we do very much want to help businesses to stay here. City Manager may have some comments.
We do. We have an incubator program. There was a report tonight on your agenda as an example, but we can come back at a later time and give you a more detailed report on retention and recruitment.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. And it is a timely topic for us because we are looking in the direction of, of new leadership at Sedcor as Mr. Bursted is retiring and we've been working diligently and that, through that process, not only in the search but also in really looking at how Sedcor needs to be redefined and how the city redefines how it works with Sedcor. So timely questions and we welcome them. All right. We have a couple more items and am I going to make it in the time?
Yeah.
Am I going to make it? All right. Here we go. Mayor's items. I have three items to share with you this evening. Appointment to the Parking Task Force. I know that in your packet and on the website, we have a report about appointments to the Parking Task Force that's been formed. And I'm very pleased to report that all of the positions were filled. One has, it needs to be reconfirmed because the person late this afternoon had to change their decision. But we're very pleased. Ms. Casey Wheeler, the new manager at JCPenney's. Dana Vigerton, help me out here. Can you know how to pronounce his name? I have so much trouble.
I did yesterday.
Yes.
Vuktivan.
I believe, something like that. Who is the manager of the Salem Center Mall. We have Marion County Commissioner Sam Brentano. From the State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services, Brian King. Alan Schectman, who is the owner of Sid's Furniture. And LeAnn Kleim from West Coast Bank. So we have worked very diligently to appoint individuals who were, who are with major businesses and also with small businesses in the downtown area or whose parking needs are affected or do affect the downtown, such as the Marion County parking issues and the State of Oregon parking issues. So that task force is now constituted and we'll be having our first meeting, I believe, in a couple of weeks. So there'll be more information out to the public about that. We've also been busy on the economic development front. One of the major goals that the city has, City Council has, is our goal on economic development, to initiate and pursue economic development strategies. And to that end, I have been meeting with members of the agricultural community, everyone from growers to food processors to value-added food manufacturers, to the Chmecata and their Vita Culture Center, to the microbrew industry, wine industry. And we are creating a mayor's task force, actually more like a mayor's think tank on agriculture, everything from when it's grown into the ground and when it actually goes to market, which is, is done statewide and nationally and internationally. So that group will begin meeting later this month. I'm very pleased that everyone that I met with said they wanted to help with that. So we have a nice group and you'll be seeing the names of that coming soon. And the third thing that I would like to introduce is a motion to authorize travel to the very occasionally, excuse me, I should say rarely done Sister City Celebration in Japan at Kauai, our Sister City in Japan. They're going to be celebrating their 90th anniversary and we began our relationship with them many years ago as a Sister City. And so my motion is to provide funding for both our City Council President Chuck Bennett and our City Manager Linda Norris to travel there. And the estimate, estimate is $3,160 per person. And you have more facts and findings in your report. So I would make the motion that we authorize the expenditure of those funds and authorize Counselor Bennett, Council President Bennett and City Manager Linda Norris to make that trip in October and represent the city and also make the presentation for the city conference that the mayor of Kauai is holding with other sister and relationship cities that will be attending. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
If we can, point of order first to keep that motion valid.
Madam Mayor, I move we extend the meeting for four minutes.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Nanki to extend the meeting for four minutes, now three and a half minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right.
Did you even get in underneath the hammer?
Now, was there a second to my motion?
I would second that, Madam Mayor.
All right. It's been moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Nanki, to authorize that our delegation, City Manager Linda Norris and Council President Chuck Bennett represent the city of Salem at the Kauai Sister City Celebration. And also, I should add to my motion that they will be making economic development-related visits with business leaders there as well in Japan. That's always a very important part of our relationship with Japan. And Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I have a conflict of interest here and I will recuse myself from voting on this.
All right. Are we ready for the question? Counselor Nanki?
Just as I had spoken with Counselor Bennett the other night on that, we would expect then a report on the activities that took place and I think that's a really good standard to set for those kind of activities in the future as well.
Very fine. All right. That's a great idea. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right. Motion carries with, with one nay.
I wanted to go backwards and ask just a quick question on, on the second mayor's item out of the three, which had to do with the task force, which then during your discussions you mentioned think tank instead?
Yes.
And, not that I'm that concerned, but looking down to the future. The formation of a task force, albeit it involves some city staff, what is the process for actually, if staff could bring that back, on, on what's the mayor's leeway on creating a task force versus, does it need council approval? Because you could have a mayor someday that wanted to have 20 task forces and if they're just sitting there popping them off on the side. This was brought forth as an information item. Was it necessarily required to be brought forth as an information item? I'd just like to understand that process a little more.
Sure.
Not to take away anything from the, the item that's on the table, but it, it just caught me as surprising on how that one moved in and wanted to clarify the process a little more.
We can bring that back. Yes, we can bring it back. In fact, with more information about others that are going to be partnering with us on the project.
Yeah. Because we may go that way on a lot of things.
Right. Okay. That's fine. We were a little confused ourselves as to how we were going to present this. So that's fine. Good. All right. Any other business to come before us?
I'm just glad you're, you're doing it because it's really as much more about economic development.
Yeah.
And Tim made a very good point tonight. So thank you for leaning forward and we'll figure out the process, I'm sure, but I'm glad you're doing it.
Right. Good. We will bring a more thorough report to you. Thanks for asking. All right. We are adjourned.